Good evening, everybody. Good evening, everybody. Good evening. Good evening. Nice to see the Harry Borowski Youth Group here. Nice to see the Harry Borowski Youth Group here. We'll get to you as soon as we can. We'll get to you as soon as we can. Welcome for everybody that's coming tonight from the ridgeline to the coastline, from Welcome for everybody that's coming tonight from the ridgeline to the coastline, from Topanga Topanga Pastrankus, 27 miles of scenic beauty, all of 90265. Pastrankus, 27 miles of scenic beauty, all of 90265. Thank you for coming to May 28th at 6:32 PM to the City Council Meeting for the City Thank you for coming to May 28th at 6:32 PM to the City Council Meeting for the City of Malibu. of Malibu. May I have a roll call, please? May I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Mullen?
Councilmember Mullen?
Here. Here.
Councilmember Pearson?
Councilmember Pearson?
Here. Here.
Mayor Protim Fair?
Mayor Protim Fair?
Here.
Here.
Mayor Wagner?
Mayor Wagner?
Here. Here.
You have a quorum.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Thank you. Let's see, who is going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Let's see, who is going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? The Borowski Youth Commission, first row. The Borowski Youth Commission, first row. Okay? Okay? You get to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. You get to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Put your right hand on your heart. Put your right hand on your heart.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, with liberty and justice for all. for which it stands, one nation under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Can I get an approval of the agenda? Can I get an approval of the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda. I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second. Second.
All in favor? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
For the record, Councilmember Peak is now present. For the record, Councilmember Peak is now present.
I'm sure he agrees. I'm sure he agrees. So we'll call him the fifth aye. So, we'll call him the fifth aye.
Yes, I did. Yes, I did.
Okay. Okay. So we now have our ceremonial presentations. So, we now have our ceremonial presentations. And the first one, oh yeah, sorry, Kelsey, the posting of the agenda. And the first one, oh yeah, sorry, Kelsey, the posting of the agenda.
The agenda for this meeting was properly posted on May 16th, 2019.
The agenda for this meeting was properly posted on May 16th, 2019.
Thank you. Thank you. And now for our ceremonial presentations. And now for our ceremonial presentations. We have the 2019 Jake Corregian Citizenship Award. We have the 2019 Jake Corregian Citizenship Award. This is something the city's been doing for many years now, since Jake was doing duty This is something the city's been doing for many years now, since Jake was doing duty out in Santa Clarita and was sadly taken very early in his life. out in Santa Clarita and was sadly taken very early in his life. I used to play basketball with the guy. I used to play basketball with the guy. He did low bridge you once in a while, but he was a good guy. He did low bridge you once in a while, but he was a good guy. And so, we have somebody here, there we are, and we have somebody to make the presentation And so, we have somebody here, there we are, and we have somebody to make the presentation and do it. and do it. Judy, you're up. Judy, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor Wagner and councilmembers. Thank you, Mayor Wagner and councilmembers. As Chair of the Parks and Recreation Commission, it's my great honor to be here tonight to As Chair of the Parks and Recreation Commission, it's my great honor to be here tonight to present the 2019 Jake Corregian Citizenship Awards. present the 2019 Jake Corregian Citizenship Awards. This award has been given since 2002 to recognize outstanding individuals who give their time This award has been given since 2002 to recognize outstanding individuals who give their time and resources to enhance the quality of parks and recreation within the Malibu community. and resources to enhance the quality of parks and recreation within the Malibu community. This year, we want to recognize two individuals, Casey Ernest and Steve Hotchkiss. This year, we want to recognize two individuals, Casey Ernest and Steve Hotchkiss. Casey, if you want to be first up? Casey, if you want to be first up? Casey has worked with the Boys and Girls Club, which I think everyone's well familiar Casey has worked with the Boys and Girls Club, which I think everyone's well familiar with, of Malibu for 15 years, first as the Program Director and later as the Executive with, of Malibu for 15 years, first as the Program Director and later as the Executive Director. Director. She has developed various recreational programming and oversees the after-school programs at She has developed various recreational programming and oversees the after-school programs at local elementary schools, as well as the Teen Center at Malibu High School. local elementary schools, as well as the Teen Center at Malibu High School. She was also instrumental in the expansion of the Wellness Center at Malibu High School. She was also instrumental in the expansion of the Wellness Center at Malibu High School. Her work with the community during and after the Woolsey Fire included fundraising, family Her work with the community during and after the Woolsey Fire included fundraising, family assistance, family financial support, mental wellness sessions, and various other services, assistance, family financial support, mental wellness sessions, and various other services, which have significantly contributed to the community's recovery from that event. which have significantly contributed to the community's recovery from that event. Casey would like to present you a plaque in honor of the award. Casey would like to present you a plaque in honor of the award.
Well, first of all, I'd just like to say, like, thank you so much. Well, first of all, I'd just like to say, like, thank you so much. Awards are wonderful but unnecessary, and I think we're all here in this room doing Awards are wonderful but unnecessary, and I think we're all here in this room doing what we can for all the same reasons. what we can for all the same reasons. And I love seeing our Malibu Sea Wolves and some of our new youth leadership in here, and And I love seeing our Malibu Sea Wolves and some of our new youth leadership in here, and just such an amazing community to be a part of. just such an amazing community to be a part of. And I want to thank everyone who entrusted the Boys and Girls Club with the relief process And I want to thank everyone who entrusted the Boys and Girls Club with the relief process and everybody who donated and participated in that in any capacity, and just happy to and everybody who donated and participated in that in any capacity, and just happy to be a part of it all. be a part of it all. So, thank you. So, thank you.
I think it's one of the great things about our community that we take the time I think it's one of the great things about our community that we take the time to recognize individuals within it. to recognize individuals within it. Steve? Steve? He brought a fan club. He brought a fan club. Steve is affiliated with the Malibu Sea Wolf Swim Organization as a parent, volunteer coach, Steve is affiliated with the Malibu Sea Wolf Swim Organization as a parent, volunteer coach, and board member. and board member. He's been a part of the Malibu aquatic community for over 30 years and has mentored numerous He's been a part of the Malibu aquatic community for over 30 years and has mentored numerous local Malibu athletes as a volunteer and through his professional career as a Los Angeles local Malibu athletes as a volunteer and through his professional career as a Los Angeles County lifeguard. County lifeguard. So, in honor of all of your contributions, we have this plaque. So, in honor of all of your contributions, we have this plaque. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thanks for the recognition. Thanks for the recognition. Wasn't ever expecting it, but it's great. Wasn't ever expecting it, but it's great. And in the honor of Jake, thank you very much. And in the honor of Jake, thank you very much. It was a sad thing that that happened to him, but he did a lot of great stuff before It was a sad thing that that happened to him, but he did a lot of great stuff before he was taken down. he was taken down. As far as, I wanted to let you know what our aquatics program's doing now. As far as, I wanted to let you know what our aquatics program's doing now. We've become a parent board. We've become a parent board. It's a nonprofit foundation, and we're running great with good numbers on kids, and we have It's a nonprofit foundation, and we're running great with good numbers on kids, and we have good retention. good retention. Some of them are hopefully going on to be county lifeguards or state lifeguards or swimming Some of them are hopefully going on to be county lifeguards or state lifeguards or swimming in school or college and all that. in school or college and all that. So, it's a great program, and we've been able to keep it going for all these years. So, it's a great program, and we've been able to keep it going for all these years. And the city's helped us out a lot, especially recently in the last several months after And the city's helped us out a lot, especially recently in the last several months after the fire. the fire. We appreciate all the help you've been able to give us and keep the program going. We appreciate all the help you've been able to give us and keep the program going. Thank you. Thank you.
Are we going to do a couple photos? Are we going to do a couple photos?
Where do we go? Where do we go? What do you want to do? What do you want to do? Do we need our? Do we need our?
Casey, aren't you bringing the future voter up with you? Casey, aren't you bringing the future voter up with you? Okay, we're back to Riva and staff for the presentation of the 2019 State of the Okay, we're back to Riva and staff for the presentation of the 2019 State of the City video. City video. I'll leave it up to staff and Riva. I'll leave it up to staff and Riva. Thank you. Thank you.
We're just going to play the video, Mayor. We're just going to play the video, Mayor.
Copy that. Copy that.
During the last year, Malibu faced an incredible catastrophic disaster. During the last year, Malibu faced an incredible catastrophic disaster. However, we're coming together as a community to rebuild. However, we're coming together as a community to rebuild. Throughout the disaster, the recovery and rebuilding process, the city remains true Throughout the disaster, the recovery and rebuilding process, the city remains true to its mission, ensuring public safety, protecting our environment, preserving our to its mission, ensuring public safety, protecting our environment, preserving our community character as a rural coastal village. community character as a rural coastal village. When we come together as a community, we can rebuild. Malibu will remain a beautiful, safe community of beaches and mountains and parks where people live, work, play sports, make friends, raise their children, and enjoy their golden years. I know that we can get through this together. We are Malibu Strong.
And thank you very much to staff, Parker, and those of you that put that together. I know it took some extra time, and we all appreciate it. Next up, we have our staff update on disaster response and recovery. Looks like Craig George is stepping up.
Good evening, Mayor Wagner, City Council. So, tonight, we're going to, for the last time, show these slides. I think it's time for some newer things, and we want to deliver a different message. I think after, in my heart, after seeing that video, we know what the devastation was. We know what's happened. We know how many structures have been damaged and destroyed in the city. And I'm happy to report that the debris removal program is well underway. It's almost completed. The Cal OAS is wrapping up their operations here in the Woolsey Fire area. They're primarily in the county. There are a couple of spots. And then, along with that, we've, there's no non-responsive properties at this time. Everybody has come into the city or into the county in some form of a program, so there won't be any necessity for a summary abatement program or anything to rid the debris. I mean, there's still a few things that are straggling as far as people that have opted out of the program and doing the debris removal themselves, but we've got a handle on that. We're going to move forward. So, what I'd like to do after tonight's presentation, we'll run through these quickly, is just tell you what the rebuilding process, where we're at with that. Because as Mayor Wagner mentioned in the video, Malibu is rebuilding, and we're in the process of doing that. And I would like to just focus, and with council's permission, on just giving you the positive rebuilding statistics as we move forward and not deal with the past and move on on that. So, I hope that's okay with you, but I think the message just needs to be very positive and clear moving forward on that. So, I'll go through these slides quickly, what we've have done so far. I know that you've seen a couple of these already, but we are issuing quite a few temporary housing permits. Those are going up almost on a daily basis. Planning is issued, well over 100 of the planning verifications, and so that process is moving very well. There have been a few of 20 was the latest update. I don't know, Bonnie could speak as to how soon that was? That as of today for the administrative plan review. So, you can see quite a few people are coming in for, on a planning level at this point, which is a very positive thing. Far as the local program debris removal, as I've said, with the right of entry at the state, we're almost complete with the removal of the 309. We have complete certifications of all the debris and the soil testing completed, and those properties, quite a few of those, over 200, have been cleared to rebuild at this time. And we're just waiting for a lot of those folks to come in and submit plans into the city. Again, this is just an update on, there is still debris removal going on, but there, if anybody needs any assistance or wants to find out anything more, they can contact the city directly, or they can talk to the Debris Removal Center over in Calabasas. We still have, and I was talking to the Fire Department today, we still have on Tuesdays and Thursdays from 8:00 to 12:30 staff from the Fire Department to review issues with access or turnarounds or anything of that nature that people have. And I know a lot of folks are taking advantage of that. There's been quite a few people in. And it's really been like the six-month mark for the fire. And I think in, when I talked to some of the other folks at other fires and that have happened throughout California, some ways, we're way ahead. We've got more information. We've got more support for the community. There's a lot of things we've done. We're just, we're, we have open arms, so to speak, and we're waiting for the community to come in that we can assist them with in the rebuilding process. And as I say, we'll just keep you updated on that. We did issue our first actual fire-destroyed house from the Woolsey Fire permit last week, and that's a picture of Drew Leonard, the property owner, with his wife obtaining all the cards and everything for that. So, that was the very first, I think, a very positive sign that we're moving forward with the debris removal, with the fire rebuilding program. And in fact, today, we issued the second building permit. So, the second house will be commencing over on Blue Water. Hopefully, this week, there'll be commencing construction. So, a very positive sign that we're on our way to rebuilding the city. I'll let Bonnie speak to this.
In response to some inquiries by the public, the Planning Department is offering Saturday appointments this Saturday, June 1st. People do need to call ahead and make an appointment. So far, actually, we've been advertising this for two weeks, and we've had nobody actually call and ask for an appointment on a Saturday. So, I would urge anybody who's interested in having a planning consultation on this Saturday, June 1st, please contact us. We're going to cut off the time to make appointments at 9:00 AM this Friday. So, if anybody's interested, please contact us. You can email a cruz@malibu city.org or just call the, just call City Hall, and we'll get you connected with the person, the right person.
Thank you, Craig. Thank you, Bonnie. Oh, no, you're still on.
Well, just a couple of quick up things, a couple of upcoming events. We have the LA County Sheriff's Civilian Oversight Committee this Saturday, June 1st, at Malibu City Hall. at Malibu City Hall. It'll be at the same time that Bonnie was talking about. And we also have a Malibu Safety and Preparedness Expo that'll occur on Saturday, June 15th, here at the Tranqus Market on that event. And with that, I'd just like to slip the last slide, just to say there are resources for people. And I think the best resource that I've seen is that people come into City Hall, if they have that opportunity, speak personally, whether it's with the planning department, the building department, plan checkers, fire department. We've got you covered if you have questions, so welcome people to come in and do that. But that'll end the presentation.
Thank you, Craig. Thank you, Bonnie. Appreciate the update, and we look forward to the new kind of updates. I appreciate that very much. I think a lot of us appreciate that. Okay, so next up, we're Communications from the Public 2A. If you filled out a speaker slip, I have about a dozen in front of me, and we'll move through this. And we'll probably, with the suggestion of the city manager, I'll look to the council to see if we want to move the Youth Commission Item 7A up a bit, because we had a number of people here, but we'll do that after we hear from the public. First up, 2A, J.D. Sledgehart. And here he is, kids. Listen to this guy. He's innovative and creative.
Coming a regular around here. So my name is J.D. Slackert, and it's a pleasure to be back here with the City Council of Malibu. Today, I'm here on behalf of the Luke Strong Foundation, which is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit that supports children with sickle cell disease. And as you guys have heard several times now, I wrote a book about my best friend named Luke Boden, who passed away from sickle cell disease, who this foundation is named after. And when I lost my home in Malibu to the Woolsey Fire, we used that book that I wrote about him to donate 100% of the proceeds to the American Red Cross through a fundraising campaign called Moon Flowers for Malibu. And that is just one example of how my best friend continues to give even though he's not with us anymore. Sickle cell disease is an illness that is cured by a bone marrow transplant. And when my best friend Luke was six years old, he had his first successful bone marrow transplant. And when you go through something like that, in the medical world, they call it your second birthday. So when Luke had his second birthday at six, he wanted to celebrate that by having a kickball party. And so every year, on the anniversary of his first successful bone marrow transplant, we had a kickball celebration for him. And unfortunately, he passed away four years later. And one of the last things he told his mother was that he wanted to continue that tradition even after he was gone. So now, his mother and I, and Luke's sister, who's with me today, have started a fundraiser called the Luke Strong Third Annual Kickball Fundraising Event. And I brought a flyer with all my information on it and for the event with me today for all of you guys. And, you know, simply, I'm here just to invite you to this fundraiser, to see if there's anything that you guys can do and attend would be fantastic, and any of you guys in the public as well. It's on August 3rd, and it'll be at 10:00 a.m., and it's at a park called Del Prado Playfield in Newbury Park, California. And it is something that we are hoping to raise $50,000, after last year we raised $30,000 for Luke Strong. And with the popularity of the book and other things, we've become overwhelmed with a lot of kids that we need to help. So we're trying to raise as much money as possible, and with your help, we're hoping to continue to grow on this foundation. But I would just say that, Mikey, thank you again for all your charitable donations. Every single time I've had any charity I've been involved with, he's been able to give a donation. So really, thank you so much, and hope we can see you coming to this one, too. So thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Thanks very much, J.D. Thanks for the encouragement. It's nice to see young people getting involved like this, and thank you very much for your contributions.
Happy to be involved.
Next up, we're going to hear from Martin Mervin, and after Martin is going to be Hans Likes. After Hans will be... Okay, all right. Certainly, okay, Martin, you've got three minutes.
I'm going to just take much less than that. So my name is Martin Merval. I'm a licensed architect. Fifty-one years ago, my mother moved into Malibu in 1968. My brother-in-law's mother moved here after World War II because Malibu was the cheapest place to buy land at that time. I was in Canada at the Parliament of World Religions when the fires happened and watched them from afar. And we actually lost the contents of my mother's life in the fire. So I get it, and I feel the pain. And I'm here with my team, coming from the other end of the Santa Monica Mountains. As an environmental planner, my teacher, Susan Nelson, actually helped to create the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy in the 80s. So we're here, as you were saying, Jefferson, for the new updates portion. We want to present a new living product that we would like to launch at this year's Chili Cookoff Labor Day weekend for the community. So this is both a labor of love and professional pride. And I want to share the roster with my partner Sri.
Good afternoon, City Council. My name is Sri Raj Paligandwiteal. I am a researcher invited to the U.S. by National Science Foundation to do a PhD at University of Southern California. And I've been researching on disaster-resistant structures for at least past five years. Can I go through the slide, or is there a mechanism? Oh, press. Oh, right here. Okay, cool. Thank you. So I invite everybody's attention to the screen. We have a small presentation. Conventional homes are not disaster-resistant. Despite major advances in technology over the last century, our conventional homes still is not resistant to fire, earthquake, or flooding. I have a brief natural disaster impact report for, in the U.S. here, and we know in particular what happened in California the past couple of years, and I don't have to explain that in detail. Conventional homes are not energy-efficient. They are not sustainable. We go through a very complicated permitting process. Still, our homes are still expensive, labor-intensive, and they are not, I want to say, very well-designed in terms of sustainability. What if we could design a home to preserve everybody's life and property and still make it luxurious and affordable? So this left-hand side, upper corner, is a Maison di Domino by Illicobus, a famous architect. He conceptualized this concrete structure 100 years ago. And the lower bottom is a steel structure called Franz Worthhaus, designed by Mies van der Rohe, two of the pioneers of modern architecture. I did this four years ago in 2019 at the Architectural Association, where I did my architectural degree. We did participate in the Venice Biennale curated by famous architect Rem Koolhaas. And the person who commissioned that job to me is the current dean of UCLA School of Arts and Architecture today. So with, we recreated these two concepts in concrete and steel in engineered wood. With that research, we present you Resist Home. What is Resist Home? Resist Home is earthquake-safe, fire-resistant, energy-efficient, cost-effective, independent, and off-grid, safe, strong, and sustainable. And I'll let Mihal go through the details of each.
So, yes, did you fill out separate slips?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
I have three minutes? Six, three minutes, okay. Okay, cool. Cool. All right, so my name is Mihal. I'm a former EMT and survivalist, and I was a search and rescue guide. I saved people from crashed planes and things like that. And ever since that experience, I've had desire to sort of create a piece of technology that preserves life as well as being really amazing to live in. So I'm going to go through this really fast because we have three minutes. This will be the fastest presentation I've ever done, but I just want to give you guys the sort of feel so you can kind of, you know, get an idea of what we're doing. But basically, it's a, it's a, we're building a foundation and a frame system that allows the structure to absorb the shocks of an earthquake and not fall down. So what we're doing is, instead of, even commercial buildings these days are designed that they'll survive an earthquake, but they're not usable afterwards. We're actually taking it beyond that and making the residential home, not only that it'll survive the earthquake, but it's actually, you can actually keep living in it afterwards. So we're doing interesting things like putting feathers inside the concrete foundation, which is, makes it actually more resilient. On the fire side, what's surprising is that the best material we found is actually wood. But our wood, you can't, you know, use it as firewood. It won't, it won't burn like that, right? But it's also sustainable. So this is called cross-laminated timber or rib-laminated timber. And then we take it to a whole nother level of sort of off-grid-ness, where we recycle the gray water inside the house. We have underground tanks for diesel, for example, which doesn't explode. We have solar system plus a generator plus lithium batteries, and all the stuff is hidden underneath the house. I'm going to keep going real quick here. Whoops. Did I just skip it? Oh, yeah, I skipped it.
So there's not only flexibility in the design, but, if I could just share... Common sense design techniques, and we're taking advantage of all the best of the best, from solar to survival to design. These actually two elements, these two images of design, from Mr. Kuma to Mr. Renzo Piano, designing for the Pritzkers, were actually not on our minds when we were doing the drawings. On the right, next.
There we go. So everything's actually hidden underneath in a earthquake-fireproof container system. And you could use it as an entertainment room. And we're also planning on building an underground garage so you can park your car. And if the fire, like, rolls over the house, you could just be down there, and it's, and it's fine. So this is actually all off-the-shelf technology that we're just integrating. We're kind of starting off from the beginning and planning it correctly, so that you have that. And is that without a timer beep?
There's 30 more seconds.
30 more seconds. Okay, cool.
That's the message.
And that's the...
Strong, sustainable, smart, and secure.
There you go.
We could, of course, talk for an hour on this, but that's the message. Those are who we are. Go back, go back, go back, go back. So the conventional homes, we want to understand what they are. They're not efficient...
Were you talking to the microphone, Martin? Thank you.
They're not sustainable. The construction costs are high, the labor, okay. Yeah, so I guess you guys can read all this. I don't need to bore you. But we're very passionate about it. That's what we stand by. My reputation, I've been a teacher at a school of architecture. My partner came from India, from Kerala. We're very blessed to have him. And, you know, this is a labor of love and also professional competence. So any questions, we're happy to answer.
Well, thank you very much for the presentation. We each received one of these, as well as the city manager and the city attorney, so we have ample copies. And thank you very much for your time and your participation.
We're on record. Thank you.
More research reports are available at request with us.
Yeah, whatever we can do. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. After Hans will be Craig Hill. After Craig Hill will be Chris Frost.
That is interesting, and I sure hope you guys come with your stuff to the June 15th.
Chris is just inviting us.
Terrific. Excellent. I want to learn that. I want to learn about that. Thank you for your time, Mayor and Council. And I'm here to talk about the grid and communications. Karen and I were talking about this. Skylar and I have talked about this. The earth is moving beneath our feet right now at the legislature, at the CPUC, and at Edison. Skylar's been to meetings about this with the CCA. Everyone's moving towards microgrids. It's like the plastics from Mrs. Robinson. The future is microgrids. And we have a possibility here of getting Southern California Edison to place microgrids over here on this side of the hill. What does that mean? That means that batteries that take power from our CCNA, from conventional power, from solar plants in the distant area, plus local solar, can be located on a neighborhood basis, on a house basis, on a citywide basis. Why citywide? Because this way, we can keep our communications grid going. If we have underground fiber-delivered communication nodes up and down the spine of the city, Pacific Coast Highway, Doom Drive, Malibu Canyon Road, then we can keep all of those 300 to 500 entry points where the cable companies, the communication companies need power. Put them all underground. How do we do that? A citywide assessment district for the power companies, for the communication companies, sorry, so that they pay to hook up to an underground hardened system. That can't be done right now because of Public Utilities Code Section 710, which was enacted nine years ago to protect the new nascent beginning IP, Internet Protocol Communications. They needed free laissez-faire regulations. That sunsets next year, and there's going to be a huge battle at the state legislature because the telecoms love this. That's why your copper wire worked and why your internet phone didn't during the fire. It's because of that rule. That rule has to go. We have to go to the CPUC and ask for the changes we need, and we need to shove our way to the front of the line with Edison to make sure that Edison puts microgrid batteries and storage on this side of the hill. Edison just signed contracts with 14 different power companies to replace a 400-megawatt power plant that they were going to build in Oxnard with microgrid, with battery storage, with local solar. I've given you an action plan. I think we need to form a working group. I think we need to lobby Southern California Edison to get those things here in Malibu, to create microgrids so that Malibu West and parts of Malibu Park that are already undergrounded are connected to a microgrid and don't have to be PSPs'd. And that the city can be PSPs'd with underground circuits staying alive, and that the rest of the city that's still overhead be brought into assessment districts to underground their lines to enjoy these benefits, too. We need to move on this. I know you've had a budget crunch, and I know you had to put assessment districts on the back burner. Needs to be moved to the front burner as a public safety commitment. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Hans, for that update. We appreciate that. Hans followed by Craig, and then Craig is followed by Chris. After Chris is Drew.
Evening, Council, Mayor, staff. I agree with the last two speakers wholeheartedly. I just wanted to offer some food for thought about your process, maybe a way to help make it more streamlined and effective. I noticed, and the nut of it is this, that there's a distinction between your comments that are in the nature of news, the things you've done in the last week or two and your accomplishments, and your comments that are in response to public comments. There are two different categories. And I think maybe if you thought of a way to separate them on the agenda, you could streamline it so that, for example, on the public comment stuff, last meeting, we had the Escondido Sycamore crowd, aka Team Kearsley, up here, and they waited a long time to get to what they wanted to because there was so much repetition about this, Tim Bigelow, who's, you know, a fabulous guy, but he was accoladed like literally seven or eight different times, separated by 10 or 15 minutes each, where you each, when you had your spot, you came back and you gave a little bit about him. And if the public comments were all more compressed into the same moment without having the news comments mixed in with them at the same time, then it would be easier for you to say stuff like, "Yeah, I agree with what so-and-so just said, and I'll just add my two cents." Instead of having to each go through the whole, "Yeah, Tim Bigelow's great because da-da-da-da-da-da." And we heard that in other words 10 minutes ago from somebody else. Not to disparage him in any way, but just as an example. And if you could then put the news comments somewhere else, you could either put them at the beginning of the night or at the end of the night, and that, there's pros and cons, arguments each way. If you put them at the beginning of the night, first off, they're on the video now, so anybody can go back and look at them. So at the beginning of the night, that means that groups like the big groups could maybe show up 15 minutes or a half hour later, have a little bit more dinner before they get here, and know that they could go look at the news later on. Or you could put them at the end of the night when everybody's tired and your brains aren't working quite as well, and maybe that's the time to say, "Here are the news comments," because it's, you're not having to think so hard. You're just presenting something that you did in the last week. So I guess the takeaway is just to... You're just presenting something that you did in the last week. So I guess the takeaway is just to acknowledge that there are two different kinds of comments and by separating that might help figure out a way to streamline things. Thanks.
Thank you, Craig. And Craig is followed by Chris Frost. Chris Frost is followed by Drew Leonard, I believe. Yes, Drew Leonard.
Good evening. My comments are regarding bollards. And for those of you on the council that haven't seen the website storefrontsafety.org, I think Jefferson might have seen it and Mikey's seen it. It's, it's an excellent discussion on why we need bollards and, you know, has a lot of good figures on it and really tells a story about, about what goes on out there with cars going through buildings. I'd like to see our bollard ordinance revisited for possible additions to its scope, primarily regarding business and pedestrian walkways that have contiguous perpendicular parking. Also would like to see the results of the mandatory bollard installation that was, is currently supposedly going on in Malibu to separate the current eating areas from parking. And was a cross check ever done to make sure the installations were completed to the specifications of the ordinance? An average of sixty vehicles a day cross into buildings across the US. It's kind of a frightening figure. Also, kind of a new current safety threat, which I think we've all experienced, is coming from distracted walking, specifically crossing streets while looking at a phone. This is especially concerning in crosswalks where the pedestrians seem to have a false sense of security. I've seen them walk across the Paradise Cove without ever even looking right or left. Just walk right across the street. They don't even look to see if the signals changed or anything. They just keep walking. So I know other cities have enacted ordinances. I'm not asking that we start looking at ordinance, but I think we need to start looking at some way to curb this in some respect or just maybe public announcements, something to get the word out. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. And moving on, Drew Leonard. And Drew is followed by Mary Ann Riggins. And after Mary Ann is Merrill May.
Hello, Council. I'm Drew Leonard. I just wanted to come up and thank everyone at the city and at the city council for helping my family get their permit to rebuild their home. All I can say to the community is that there's absolutely nothing else that anyone could do to make it any easier. And it was a pleasurable process and thank you. And I'm also here for another issue. Everyone is really working hard to try to make the city a safer place for all its citizens. But we still have people in our community that just go by old ways. And I remember right after the fire, there was a state council meeting that I attended where there were discussions about railroad ties and wood chips. And I'm asking you guys to try to pass that ordinance banning the wood chips being spread out in properties. Maybe it's okay for planters or something like that, but people are using it for roads. Weed control. And it's just, I've already had one fire that I've gone through because of wood chips. And I think it's something that needs to be addressed while we go through all these other issues. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Mary Ann, you're followed by Merrill and Merrill is followed by Lloyd.
Hello, council members. Thank you, Mayor. I'm not sure if everybody's aware here, but the school district was changing the name of Point Doom Marine Science School to a very inventive inclusive name of Malibu Elementary School. This has been done with, I think, very limited public input. It's been decided essentially by the teachers and the staff at the schools between Cabrillo and Point Doom. I can somewhat understand wanting to have something that's more melding of the two school communities. But as a long resident of Point Doom, an attendee of, graduate of Point Doom Elementary and a parent of a child who graduated from Point Doom Marine Science, I think that this needs to have a little bit stronger community input on it. The school of, the name of Point Doom wasn't even allowed to be considered as one of the selections by the community. And I would just, I would really like it if the city council could say or do something. We don't, we shouldn't be losing this history of our community. There should be a way that these combining of the schools can be done in such a manner that we don't lose our past and that it's preserved for the future and the memories are made going forward. That this small moment in time of these melding of these groups can be not at the cost of our history. And thank you.
Thank you, Mary Ann. And Merrill is followed by Lloyd Ahern.
Good evening. I, I just wanted to throw out a little reminder. I was in a, a business on Point Doom the other day and there was a fireman from the fire station by Zumares there. And we got to talking and he goes, you know, you really need to remind people to do brush clearance. And I mean, I'm sort of in fire shock right now still. And it was a good reminder though because he's talked about all the fuel that's built up because of the rains. And Rick, you can address this about, you know, the fire loads or however you describe it now. But as I drove around after that, I started looking at all the tall grass that is very dry next to houses. And so even though we just went through this fire, I think we're entering a season where it's time to be very vigilant again for individuals to do brush clearance around their homes. But also in the past, the city and the county and Caltrans has done a very good job in the last few years clearing along the highways and the roads to make little barriers because there was that fire that started by Pepperdine and burned down a few years ago and took out about ten homes on Malibu Road, which if, that just ignited some brush that was right by the road. So I thank the city and the county and Caltrans for doing the good job in the last few years and appeal to them to keep it up. But also just to remind everybody to be vigilant about the brush clearance because, just because we went through it, we're not out of the woods again and pay attention in the high wind events. So, thank you.
Thank you, Merrill. Lloyd, you're up, our final speaker.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Lloyd Ahern. May thirteenth, our last meeting, we had a letter written by the council to Supervisor Kuhl. And we were looking for the letter today and I couldn't find it. Is it, is it out now? Has it been sent to Sheila? And is it public?
I can get you a copy, Lloyd.
Okay, I'll call you tomorrow. Thank you.
Very well, thank you. Okay. Commissioned city manager updates, committee updates.
We had one report from a commissioner.
Copy that. It would be two B. I'll bet it's Scott Dietrich. Oh, you're up, Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Public Works became aware of all the Caltrans work that's going in eastern Malibu along the highway. And giving credit to Lance Simmons, who's an avid cyclist, he said, wait a minute. Look how wide that shoulder has become. We could put in a bike lane in eastern Malibu, which of course is very congested and there's always been parking problems. So I wanted to make you guys aware of that, that Lance was designated by the commission to approach public safety, to work with them and to see if we could actually get a bike lane that would, you know, maybe cause people not to get hit by cars, we're hoping. And secondly, we had brought to you guys a month and a half ago, a problem in Big Rock with Edie Michaels suggesting that the city's assessment district is inadequate. We discussed this at length, but it, from Rob DeBoe issued a report refuting much of Mr. Michael's analysis. And it looks like the, the city contractor, Fugro, is doing a pretty good job. But we're, we have one last opinion from Chris Dean we're waiting on. And at that point, we will be able to, I guess, summarize the findings on that. And that's it from Public Works. Thank you.
Thank you for the update. Appreciate it very much. Okay. Now we're, yep. No, Reeve is up.
Good evening, everybody. I wanted to start by congratulating Steve Hotchkiss and Casey Ernst. They have very well deserved awards tonight. So I'm very happy that we were able to provide that to them. I'd really like to thank our Culture Arts Commission who put on an amazing art show last week called Radical Beauty. The artwork is still up here in City Hall. And there was some amazing videos that were made by artists about the fire and the recovery process. And we're looking at ways to get those out to the community, showing them on our website and Channel Three, and also talking with staff about doing another showing. We had a full house here last week watching the videos and it was just really, really amazing. So my thanks to not only the Culture Arts Commission, but the Community Services Department who put that on. Merrill, thanks for the tee up to what I was gonna say, which is, as everybody knows, our new fire safety position, Jerry Vander Mullen, started two weeks ago. And he is available to meet with residents to assist, to make sure that they're in compliance with their brush clearance and provide feedback and input on that. And also if there's any neighborhoods or homeowners associations who'd like to talk to him about things that would help their individual neighborhoods, he is available to meet with you. And he's available at the City Hall main number. And he's at extension three eight seven. So please don't hesitate to reach out to him and take advantage of his knowledge and help. We have several events coming up. On Saturday, there's the Los Angeles Sheriff Department civilian oversight meeting here at City Hall. And that's Saturday from ten to twelve. This coming tomorrow, in fact, May twenty ninth, we have a joint commission meeting. That's a joint meeting of the Parks and Rec Commission, the Culture Arts Commission and the Public Safety Commission. And that'll be here at City Hall at five thirty. And we also have tomorrow from six to eight, a workshop on the rainwater and gray water issues here in the city. And then next Tuesday, June, June fourth, Water District Twenty Nine will be having a meeting for the community to talk about all of the upgrades that they'll be doing to their system. And that'll be here at City Hall from six to eight. And then lastly, I just want to announce that we've been working with our reverse nine one one provider, which is Everbridge. In the past, the way that system worked is we were provided data that gave us access to landlines here in the city. And they've been able to expand that data that we now actually have the ability to make phone calls to cell phones. So if you have a cellphone that's registered to a nine oh two six five zip code here in Malibu, we'll be able to access those numbers even if you haven't signed up. So I thought that was very good news that people would know. Of course, that means that we have to keep the power on. So we'll be working on that as well. And that concludes my remarks unless the council has any questions. Thank you.
I would, actually wanted to start off with a question for staff. Maybe Bonnie or Craig could answer this, which was just about the bollards. I know that came, that came up and a couple of restaurant owners had talked to me about it. If you could just give an update on what the current bollard ordinance is real quick.
Be glad to. The Parking Lot Safety Ordinance, as it's officially called, currently addresses outdoor pedestrian seating areas. So it doesn't protect walkways or storefronts or anything like that. It's, it's outdoor seating areas. I don't have the exact number, but almost all of the applicable property owners subject to the ordinance have complied. There are a few that are still working on it. The bollards were more involved than initially contemplated. And then we amended the ordinance to make some changes, which did help. And now we've got a very good success rate. I think there are a couple of properties that are still working on solutions. But overall, we've had a very good response from property owners.
Would, I'm just asking for consensus here if council would be interested in having an item back, maybe in six months or something where we could review that ordinance and see if we need to expand it or not after the summer.
Can I ask that that item comes as part of the budget so we can talk about it with the work plan, if you don't mind?
Done. All right. I will second what Reeve said about Steve and Casey. They are both amazing parts of our community. Thank you, Patrick, and the rest of the staff for the awesome video and your guys' commitment, both during the disasters, but more importantly, the rest of the year when you guys do a great job. Uncle Martin and team, that is my uncle who is speaking to everybody today about that project that he's talking about. And thank you guys for coming and sharing that. I know that you guys put a lot of time into that. And looking at allowing people to build a safer home. So thank you very much. Micro grids. As those of you do or do not know, I sit on the city's board of the Clean Power Alliance. I would really like to see the rest of this council and maybe some of our staff get out to tour a micro grid facility. I'm very grateful that the city of Oxnard lobbied very, very hard and the environmental groups up there to make it so that they, Edison did not get away with putting in another fossil fuel based power plant along the California coastline. And I'm very happy to see that our state is moving forward and using technology to its advantage to make our air cleaner and deliver power more reliably, more reliably. That's the reason why we formed the CCA down here. It's a bummer that the cleaner, or the CPA, which is a CCA. It's a bummer that that didn't happen sooner and it still bothers me that we didn't go with a hundred percent renewable as the default. We'll have the opportunity to do that again. And I would like, yeah, that could set up some tours for all of you. I think that it would be very helpful for both the council and staff to better understand not only the grid, but the distribution of electricity. And it kind of goes along with what Scott's been talking about and many other people in the community for a long time, which I will bring up during the budget meeting, or the budget item. I would like to see if there's consensus from council, maybe even get an item back about the naming of the school. I've heard a lot of different complaints from people about that. And I think that the school district is listening to a few powerful people. And I don't think that they have a lot of community input and I think it's happening behind closed doors. And it bothers me because it's another reason why we need our own school district. And it's super lame when those things get changed and they can get changed and the school district has the power to do that. But that's why you as the voters need to go to the poll. And why we as a community need to get our own school district. That's my two cents in it. It's another example of why the kids that are here and their families and parents aren't always, their voices aren't always heard. And I think that the school district has a little bit of a history now of not getting the word out on things. And it's really frustrating. Personally for me, I know in Texas, my family was involved in a lot of things a long time ago. And recently, some of those things have come under fire. Both race things and things with the civil war and other stuff, which are gnarly, but they're a part of American history. And when we go to change that stuff on the local level, we need to remember that very strongly written in our constitution is the power of cities and local control. And more importantly with that, America cannot shy away from its history and nor can a local school district. So I think that that's something that's important and those things were named things for a certain reason. And maybe the school changes from being a marine science school and that's why they need to change the name. I'm not on the school board. But I do know that I've received a lot of complaints about that. Mary Ann, I appreciate you bringing that up. And those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Skylar. Still on two C. I guess we'll move down the line with the city council subcommittee reports and the council member meeting attendance and that kind of fun stuff. Mikey, do you want to take it from here?
Sure. First of all, happy birthday, Karen. That wasn't a secret, right? Thought you were gonna pass out cupcakes to everybody.
But they're here somewhere.
Just kidding, just kidding. Just kidding. And one last time, it's the third time I've seen that video. I still get choked up. I'm just gonna move on from that. Powerful. Well done. Really well done. What have I been doing? I've, first of all, I want to thank all the speakers. I always appreciate people coming down. I'll try not to go to Craig's point. I'll try not to rehash. I'll try not to go, to Craig's point, I'll try not to rehash everything that Skylar just said. Oh, did Uncle Martin just leave? There you are. Oh, I have a quick question. Is that how, is that design of house built a shelter in place in a fire event? Perfect. That's what I thought so, and that's what I wanted to hear. Big fan of what you're doing. That looks great. Literally looks great. Yeah. Thank you for your presentation very much. Microgrids, been a fan for years. Yes, we need to look at them. Perfect for Malibu. Drew, super, that was a kind of great moment that felt really good, that you got the permit and let everyone broadcast it. I think it just was a real good, a feel-good moment, and thanks for sharing that. You know, and maybe this is just where I'm at, because I, I tend to go out to a lot of properties that burned down when people get ahold of me, just because I, as an ex-planning commissioner, I find that easiest way to understand it. But I seem to keep hearing, because I've also been to the county just for friends to try and see what I can do, that the county is falling behind what Malibu's doing, to say it politely. So I keep hearing people in the county looking at Malibu and going, wow, we wish we had the resources that Malibu had and what you guys are doing. So notable opinions from the outside, and I just wanted to share that. So I know it's a long, hard slog, and Craig and I were talking about it earlier, but the hard part's probably starting from a lot of people now. Now they're gonna get into actually trying to build a house, and, and it's really hard, and it's really confusing when you don't build houses for a living. So, you know, hang in there, staff and everybody. It's gonna be, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a while here, but thank you for all you're doing. Really notable. And Drew, on the wood chips and railroad ties, 100% with you. We're trying to get to, it's been difficult to push things forward for a lot of obvious reasons, like having to do your permit and, for example, and so, but yes, we hear you loud and clear, and I saw what you saw, and yes, I get it 100%. Thanks for bringing that up. And good reminder, Merrill, yes, absolutely. Some of the grasses, I'm a mountain biker, and they're like eight feet high, and it's unbelievable. I've never seen them grow that high in my entire life in one spring in Malibu. So, moving forward. I was asked to be a part of a school district health and safety advisory committee meeting. It was at the Boys and Girls Club. Wasn't exactly sure what it was about, but it's the district assessing the mental health needs and safety of students. And it was absolutely fascinating, and I discovered something I wanted to share. It's just, and Casey's gone, but what an amazing job the Boys and Girls Club's doing with their wellness program, too. And the district was literally there to understand how and what they've done, because they're struggling so much in the rest of the district with this issue. And the statistics on the amount of students that have been helped by this program are overwhelming. And they've become to accept this program, and it's not an outlier. It's somewhere they're comfortable, and it's not a big deal to go ask for help. And they've had over 300 people this year go through that program, and it's expanded to the middle schools, it's expanded to the elementary schools, and I just, I just think, just drag Casey back up for another award on that one. That is absolutely amazing. I was really glad to be there. I also attended my first council of governments meeting as Karen's backup. I don't, I don't remember where you were, but I hope you're having fun. And thank you, Riva, for joining me there. My main message, and I've been really very happy with Riva's help on this, was to hopefully get the local towns, local cities near us, to join us in pushing for AB 1788 to ban rodenticides in the hills. Didn't get an answer there. I'm not quite sure of the process. You mean, you could, I know it has to go back to their local community before, and they get some sort of motion to come back to the COG, which by which time, probably too late, but I'm not sure what your take was on that.
So typically, the COG board likes to go to their individual cities and see if there's support for a particular piece of legislation before the COG approves it as its own board. I did hear from Hidden Hills today, who asked for a sample letter, and I provided that to them, and I'll follow up with the other cities as well.
Thank, I really appreciate your support and help on this, Riva. It's been great. And it was also great to see this nice group of Malibu residents there, which I guess it's very, it seemed like they were acting like it was pretty rare, anyone shows up at a COG meeting. And they were there to educate the COG, the local cities in our area, on the proposal to allow camping in Escha and our, and the dangers of that in our local Santa Monica Mountains. So really appreciate the Malibu group that showed up there. That was excellent. I was at the Radical Beauty Art Exhibit opening last week. I, as Riva said, wow, what a great, what a great event. This place was packed with people, and the positivity was amazing. And when we all came in here and watched these videos, and you could just feel your trauma leaving your body, at least for that night. It really was an amazing night of healing. Over 100 artists. The arts up everywhere. They're gonna do more events this summer, as Riva said. What a great, what a great event. Really felt good to be here for that. Also, wanted to say I visited, and I know Skylar's been there, the Big Heart Ranch up near Trancas. They do equine therapy and basically animal therapy with kids groups and schools. It's a very special place, really amazing program, incredible volunteers. And if you haven't heard of it, or, I don't know if it's open to the public, they were having a little event there when I went. The Big Heart Ranch is doing pretty amazing things in Malibu.
It's, it's open to any members of the, like, the 90265 Malibu community, so those within the city and without. And I think it's bigheartranch.org or something like that. I forget what the URL is, but something like that.
Yeah, pretty special. And tomorrow, along with Karen, visiting the Community Corp in Santa Monica, the one that's done a lot of affordable housing projects in Santa Monica. We're gonna tour with some interested local citizens that want to participate. We're gonna tour some of their facilities and look at what they've done as far as affordable housing. And that's where we'll be tomorrow afternoon. And with that, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mikey. And Rick, are you ready to go?
Ready for action. Craig, you're right. We do have to be brief on our comments, and I'm gonna work to be more brief. Commissioners, work planned for the next year will be discussed at the June 10 city council meeting. So we'll be discussing the things that the commissions will be working on for the next fiscal year. So, you know, get your priorities in order, let your council members know this is the time before it gets etched in stone for the year. Drew Leonard, thank you very much for taking the time to say thank you. You're right, the city staff does a great job. The people at the city work very hard. It's kind of cool for you to be first through the breach, and I'm glad we were able to celebrate that milestone. But more than that, I'm sure you got a lot of things going on. Just getting the permit is the beginning of the fun, so it's nice for you to give a little of your evening time to come down here and say thank you. That goes a long way for the actual people who are doing all the hard work, so that's very nice of you. On the school name change, I kind of agree with that. I read the story. I'm not that literate on all the subject matter, but it sounded like teachers get three votes, and the community gets one vote. I'm like, eh, let's draw on this picture. I think it's probably something that needs to be revisited, and I hate to see Juan Cabrillo and the marine science school's names just kind of get lost, and I think there seems to be a little more chat about that. Hans, thanks for the white paper. We'll look into that. And as I said, I want to agree with Drew. Thank you very much to the staff for doing such an awesome job since the fire happened. Really appreciate all the hard work. We get to be up here and say, yeah, this city did this, that, but you are all the people that do the hard work here in the trenches every day. You're the people interacting with people like Mr. Leonard, who are going through a very difficult time, and you're shepherding them through that, and I really appreciate that. That's very nice of you to do that. And on that note, I wonder if we could get consensus to maybe City Hall to be closed on the 5th of July, since the 4th of July is on a Thursday. Do we have consensus for that up here, do you think?
I would definitely support that. I think the staff has been working out of control over hours this year, and I think that them having some extra time off would be awesome, provided, we do have the vital staff in place, but I don't know if we can say that.
I'll bet Trevor has some interest in this statement.
Yeah, we don't, we can bring it back as an agenda item, but...
Can we bring it back as part of the budget item a little later this evening? Can they bring that up?
Yeah, we haven't noticed.
We can get the ball in motion later on this evening.
But they can, you can, there's a financial aspect to it.
I support bringing back an item about this at the next meeting.
I'll second that.
There you go, Trevor.
All right. Thanks very much. I promise not to say "um" when I'm up here, and I just said it. I went to the Contract Cities meeting, the annual meeting, which was great. Riva was there, Lisa was there, Karen was there, Skylar was there. It was good. It's really good. It's nice to get out there and hobnob with all the other contract cities out there. We got to do a little informal chat with the fire chief and bend his ear for a little while.
But you missed the fight.
Yeah, I missed the fight. You know, whenever there's alcohol and late at night, some people, I just kind of stay outside the effective casual radius. There was a fight between a couple of city council members, I think it might have been the mayor and the mayor pro tem of one of the other cities in the county of Los Angeles, of which we were not a part. We were discussing, and we think, maybe we have to step up our game a little bit to make the evening news. I mean, we'll consider that. But we are representing all of you, and we want to make sure that we do it in a professional manner. The Fire Expo is happening on June 15. I want everybody to consider showing up to that. Everyone's in the receive mode in terms of information on how to make their house more resilient and how to make themselves more prepared, and there's going to be a lot of good information that's gonna be there. Andy Cohen, my public safety commissioner, is kind of going above and beyond the call of duty and organizing all of that. He's put a lot of effort into it, so I appreciate if you could consider coming on by. Memorial Day was on Monday, and it's nice to commemorate those who are no longer with us. You know, so I was in the military for 30 years, and a lot of my friends are no longer with us, who were in the service of that country. My daughter sent me a little Instagram thing, and you may have seen it, and it showed a picture of people at the beach, and it said, "Your day at the beach is, is, is possible because of their day at the beach." And right below it, there's a picture of the guys storming out of the, you know, landing craft on Normandy. So it's nice to commemorate those who are no longer with us. We get to enjoy this beautiful country that we have. Mikey, your comments about the county and the city being different. I work in the city, I mean, I work in the county. I live in the city, and I get to participate in the city government, and there's a big difference. There's a huge difference. Even during the fire, we tried really hard to get people in as quickly as possible, and we were pretty successful. In the county, they were like, pff, gates closed for 45 days. They're really not that receptive. And it's interesting for me to deal with the people out there, where 60% of my district was destroyed, and they don't have the loving embrace of the staff of Malibu necessarily when they go to the county and they get those things done. So I appreciate you pointing that out. And that is that. How'd I do, Craig?
Just appoint your timekeeper. How's that?
It's not about duration, it's more about organization and structure.
All right, one thing at a time, okay.
And Karen, you're up. Thank you, and happy birthday.
Thank you. Let's see. I do look forward, as I'm sure we all do, to looking at Mr. Mervell's brochure and information here. Hans, are you still here? No. Okay, microgrids. I couldn't agree more, so I won't say anything else about that, but I think we're all gonna be looking into it. Chris Frost, thank you. Bollards. I cannot disagree. Drew, I'm really happy it was you guys. I will just state for the record, the Lenards are close family friends of ours for many, many years, and I'm really happy. Not that I wish it wasn't everybody, but I'm glad it was you guys, and thanks for coming here to say how quickly you got through the process and, and how much cooperation and, and work you were able to accomplish with the staff. And I do want to point out, you came in right away, and you worked in conjunction with the staff and in partnership. And without both elements, I don't think the speed that you got your permit with would have been possible. So for anybody who's watching at home, if you haven't come into the city yet, please do, or email me, call me, come to my house. I will direct you to the right person. It's possible. And I feel bad when I see people frustrated and having a lot of anxiety when they haven't gotten as close to the source as possible, because most people find answers to their questions and resolution to their problems. Mary Ann, I could be wrong, but the name, maybe it's not over yet. That's all I'll say. Not that I have any inside information, but I just have a feeling that there are a lot of questions out there, so we'll see what happens. Merrill, brush clearance. I might be wrong, and we have some fire department people here, current and former. Seems like enforcement has fallen off, and nobody has to say yes or no, but that's my impression.
The brush inspections are going on in the city of Malibu as we speak, and the deadline is actually June 1st. So they're, they're gonna be out there on June 1st, checking all of the compliance with the brush inspection regulations. So June 1st is in the city of Malibu. It's May 1 up in the hills and on the 101 side.
Okay, so that's in two or three days. So, everybody listening, please comply. Don't wait for that second and third notice, and be safe, and have your neighbors safe, too. Scott Dietrich, thank you. Thank you to you and Lance for your work with public safety. I wouldn't ride a bike on the highway if you paid me, but that's just me. Yeah, as Mikey said, we are continuing our conversation on affordable housing. We've got a tour tomorrow in Santa Monica with Community Corp, who's been very, very successful at affordable housing. That means people who have an income not over a certain amount. It's not homeless housing or transitional housing. It was my extreme honor and privilege to introduce the library speaker in this last go-round, Michael Scott Moore, told about his experience as a hostage, being held by Somali pirates for almost three years. Good news for him, he was freed and wrote a book about it. So if I had to make that choice, I'd probably rather not have been taken hostage and not written the book and gone on tour. Contract cities, yes, we did not get into a fistfight. The only good news I could hear about that story, which I didn't know about till I got home, was that it was two council members from the same city, which I think is preferable than having it be council members from different cities, if there's anything good in that story. But I wanted people to know that it's not just hanging out and hobnobbing with other cities. There were a lot of workshops and panel discussions, and some of the topics included rethinking how we manage crises on the front lines of homelessness, first responders today and tomorrow, what it takes to become a smart city. There was a presentation and a question and answer with two of our county supervisors, Janice Hahn and Catherine Barger. There was one about best practices in protecting water resources. So Contract Cities is, I think, 76 different cities. I've been told it represents 8 million constituents. And obviously, the topics that they cover are things that are of interest to Malibu and everybody else. Radical Beauty, I had to miss the opening, but I've been amazed by the work that is down here and also upstairs, so please check it out if you haven't already. And I do want to thank everybody who's gotten involved, particularly with the MRCA and its plan to do camping in environmentally sensitive habitat areas. Obviously, that puts all of us at extreme risk of fire, and there are other disruptions and harmful activities that that opens the door to. Rodenticide is a continuing issue, and yeah, I'd like to see 1788 passed resoundingly, and I know it goes to the state senate sometime soon. Riva?
I don't have a hearing date, but it's working its way through senate appropriations right now.
Okay, and just a reminder, Mikey and I are continuing our work as the co-chairs of the Disaster Response and Recovery Ad-Hoc Committee. Please feel free to contact either of us or email recoveryad hoc@malabucity.org and give us any feedback, suggestions, things that you would like to see covered. And our report will be forthcoming, covering pretty much every aspect of the disaster that we saw with Woolsey and how we would like to see improvement for the city going forward. And that's it.
Thank you, Karen. I think Skylar had several other comments additionally.
Yeah, I just wanted to, Drew, could you come up to the mic? I actually have a question for you. I also attended the art exhibit, I got there a little bit later and that was amazing. My question for Drew is sort of something I think will maybe help other people and that is, what advice would you give to other homeowners, having been in that situation and being it now that you've gone through that process? What are the things that you would suggest that people do that really helped you with that?
What I'd probably suggest is figure out what you want to do and get it in. Basically, I just kept throwing stuff at the city and they responded to it and I tried, I went for administrative plan review and kept it fairly simple and asked a lot of questions and that's just the best way to do it. But I would suggest try to get your project in as quickly as possible and you'll be getting corrections on the fly.
Thank you. And thank you to all of our planning staff that's been working so hard in public works and environmental health, the guys downstairs and upstairs and in the back corner for working so hard on all that stuff.
Thank you, Skylar. I will be equally as brief as the other council members. On the micro grid systems, I know Hans is on the way to the airport, I believe, those systems will be a great impact in our future, the way our communities develop. I oftentimes have the fortune to go on to our United States military bases where the micro grid systems are an active part of the forward operating bases or FOBs. And we quite often are in very remote areas and you have every convenience, self-contained and probably most FOBs are between 50 and 100 buildings with 200 to 300 enlisted and several commands elements. And you go to the FOB and everything's there. It's like, you can't believe it, there's no infrastructure coming to it, it's all solar-operated. And I kind of look at it like, well, the military's pulling this off, how come commercially we can't, how come regionally we can't? And I look forward to this, I hope in my lifetimes we see more and more of these micro grids, a great system, can't speak enough about it. I did attend the art exhibit early in the morning with the press and was very impressed. I think it's part of the healing procedure. As the individual that the city invited from Victoria, Australia, he said that these expressions were what communities need and we need to come out and we need to express equally frustration, warmth, compassion and understanding of our city staff and the people that you have elected, that our hearts are here with you, we're experiencing quite a bit of this with you, you're our neighbors and our friends. And just try to follow this program of healing. And I think it's beneficial to everybody and I was happy to see the exhibit and I recognized a lot of faces there in the pictures and a lot of the art and could appreciate that. The same evening, I attended a meeting at the Duke's Restaurant where our current sheriff, Alex Villanueva, was there with his staff discussing road closures and things that do affect us in the future when we have another event. And the details can be seen in the local press and all kinds of fun social media sites if you choose to follow that. And we're moving on now, thank you very much for your patience. We'll move on to the agenda and I believe I had put it forward with a second if we could move 7A to the front. Did anything get pulled by council or anybody in the public on the agenda? Okay, the report is that nothing was pulled, so I'd like to look to the council.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda, moving item 7A up front. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And that was approving the consent calendar as well.
We just have a motion for the consent calendar?
Yes.
Yes, we did it.
Approving the consent calendar and moving item 7A to be heard before.
Before 4A. Thank you.
Terrific, so we'll go straight to 7A. Harry Borowski, commission, and you've got it. Here come the speaker slips. And Jesse, are you going to take the handle on this?
I'm going to briefly introduce recreation supervisor Katie Gallo, who directly oversees the Harry Borowski Memorial Youth Commission. Katie does an excellent job working with the youth and has done some really amazing things to continue to give the youth commission a voice and legitimacy as we move forward each year. So I will leave it open to her and I believe we have a couple of youth that would like to speak as well after she, after she answers any questions you have.
Certainly, and it's great that you're pulling this one through for us and appreciate the time and effort that you've put into this and we do have four speakers after you're done.
Good evening, Mayor Wagner and members of city council. The item before you this evening is the annual appointment of members to the 2019-2020 Harry Borowski Memorial Youth Commission. The two-month recruitment resulted in 25 candidates in grades seven through 12. Each applicant had the option of an in-person interview or to submit a filmed interview. All of the interview topics were provided to the applicants ahead of time and included information as to their volunteer and leadership experience, involvement in school activities and their aspirations for becoming a member of the youth commission. Interview panelists included the executive director of the Boys and Girls Club of Malibu, a Parks and Recreation Commissioner and two staff members at Malibu High School involved in volunteer and community service. Staff's recommendation this evening is to appoint the 23 applicants who successfully passed the application and interview process and the applicants who are not appointed are still eligible to volunteer or earn community service learning hours and speak during public comment at commission meetings.
Thank you very much and we have four public speakers. Luke Webster, you're up first. Luke, you are followed by William Bima, followed by Lloyd Bima, followed by Harold Bima. You're up, youngster. Hi, gentlemen, in the back there, if you want to come up and take the front seats, we can move through this more expeditiously as per Craig Hill's request.
Hello, I'm Luke Webster and I would love to serve on the Malibu Youth Commission for a third year in a row. I believe that I still and should contribute to the Malibu community, being beneficial in any way I can. I enjoy being a part of the commission and it really opened my eyes to local government and how much we can do as a community, so, thank you.
Well done, Luke, thank you. Luke is followed by William, who's followed by Lloyd.
Hello, hello, everybody. It's a pleasure and it's an honor to be presenting in front of all of you guys and I want to just take the time to say thank you to you guys for everything you guys do and it should definitely be something that the community got to see more of because this is like behind the scene. But besides that, I'd also like to say that throughout all the time, me living here in Malibu, I've seen the power of what the youth can actually do and the youth is the future. So I feel like, I feel like the youth has to, I feel like my brothers, for example, have a, have a, have a good chance and become, I just want to support them in becoming great leaders for the youth and yeah, that's pretty much it and I don't want to hold you guys' time too much, but appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, well done. Lloyd, followed by his brother Harold.
Hello, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to come up here and say hello. I just wanted to come up here and say hello and I hope to go on a youth committee to explore, explore the opportunities it'll give me and all the, and all the government and all just that stuff that it'll bring and I just kind of wanted to open my eyes and get an introduction to it, thank you.
Okay, well done. Followed by Harold, Harold, you're up, final speaker.
Hello, everybody here in front of me. I would like to start off by saying, the reason I want to be in this youth community, community is to help, is to help all the students that don't have voice and everybody that just cannot say anything in the community. And I think it's really important for everyone to get a voice, even the young people, because, because even though like they're still a little age and still underlooked, like they're still 100% of our future, because all the kids will eventually be adults and be the same spot here, so I think it's fair to, I think it's fair that if the kids still get a voice, which I want to say, thanks.
Okay, well done. Thank you. Okay, we're back to council. Thank you, gentlemen, speakers.
Mayor, I would like to make a motion to approve item 7A with the staff's recommendation and I would like to thank Mr. Webster along with William, Luke and Harold. Thank you so much for coming down here and Lloyd? Public speaking is a really hard thing and as you get older, you're going to get really good at it. Okay, so don't be nervous, dude, I'm so stoked that you guys came down here, that's really awesome.
I'll second the motion. Okay, and the motion was seconded by Councilmember Pearson, do we have a vote?
Aye.
All in favor? Aye, thank you, motion passes. Thanks, folks, now you get to see how sausage is made. Okay, we're moving on to 4A. 4A, it's up. Oh, I'm sorry, not 4A?
4B.
4B, sorry, 4B. Okay, 4B and that's the big one, the budget. Here we go, folks.
Lisa's going to give the presentation, but before she started, I just wanted to thank all of the city staff and our department heads who really took what the council had asked us to accomplish in waiving fees to HART and went through line by line in their budgets to cut where they could to make this happen. And so it's been a difficult process to make it work, but it really owes that to staff and to Lisa for making it happen.
Thank you, good evening, mayor and council. As Riva said, we are here for the public hearing of the proposed budget for fiscal year 2019-2020. And she stole my thunder by thanking staff. I'm going to further and just shout out the names of the finance staff who worked in addition to the department heads and actually staff from every department to make this work and that's Ruth Piamon, Renee Nierman, Joni Hand and Pamela Romani. Everybody really pulled their weight so we could pull off getting this budget to you. And just to be clear, this version of the proposed budget reflects the revenue and expenditures of the current year through April. And using these figures, we've, we further refined the numbers that we presented on April 24th at the budget workshop. And this budget also reflects the council's direction to include the waiving of 100% of fees for like-for-like and like-for-like plus 10% of the Woolsey Fire rebuilding permits. I do want to note that a resolution for the actual waiving of the fees will come back to the council with the final budget on June 24th and with that resolution will also be a component that includes the refunding of any fees that were paid in the current fiscal year. And just to note that this iteration of the budget includes that as well. We took those numbers into account, the refunding as well as the waiving of the fees for next year. So, the city's budget is based on the expected revenue for the upcoming year and our revenue numbers have changed a little bit. So in fiscal year 2019-2020, the city anticipates receiving $47.9 million of revenue, including[1452.92][1453.35]$30.9 million of general fund revenue. Property tax accounts for 41% of the general fund revenue in this version of the budget. In the prior version presented on April 24th, property tax made up 38% of the general fund. This change is due to the removal of fees for Woolsey Fire rebuilds, which decreases both licenses and permits and service charges. In the prior version, these were each at 12% of revenue and are now at 8% and 9% respectively. Malibu's other major tax revenue sources are sales tax, utilities, users tax, transient occupancy tax, which together make up another 30%. So, the removal of 100% of the fees for the like-for-like and like-for-like plus 10% of Woolsey Fire rebuilding permits results in a decrease of $2.6 million in the projected general fund revenue. The proposed expenditure budget is based on the council's priorities and work plan. On April 24th, the council prioritized public safety as number one, followed by the Woolsey Fire recovery at number two and school district separation as number three. Additionally, the council postponed a number of work plan items to future years to achieve the waiving of Woolsey Fire permitting fees. The revised work plan for 2019-2020 is attached at the end of the budget and details the city's priorities as reordered by the council on the 24th. The council typically adds tasks and assignments over the course of any given fiscal year. Staff resources and funds are stretched thin for the upcoming year. If council wishes to add an item to the work plan, another item will need to be removed to make it possible. And if we look at those top three priorities and look at the amount of funding available to them, the city proposes to spend $9.1 million on the number one council priority of public safety. The fiscal year 2019-2020 proposed budget includes $2.3 million for Woolsey Fire recovery efforts and there is currently $50,000 allocated for school district separation. This is for professional services to assist the city in moving this process forward. Additional resources may be necessary, depending on the resources needed to actually achieve the separation process and what is determined to be necessary to make a presentation to Laco. Significant changes have been made to the, that's not moving. There we go. So we've made significant changes in the proposed budget. Again, this version assumes waiving 100% of like-for-like and like-for-like plus 10% Woolsey Fire rebuild permit fees. Per the council direction, staff has added $200,000 for the coastal vulnerability study and approximately $30,000 to opt-in to 100% renewable energy for city facilities. It postpones the $1.8 million City Hall solar project to a future year and decreases the general fund grant program by $30,000. Other reductions were made throughout the budget by all departments to trim expenses. The city is required to maintain a balanced general fund every year, which means that ongoing operating expenses cannot exceed the annual general fund revenue for the year. Revenues are now projected at $30.9 million and operational expenses are projected at $34.1 million. The $2.6 million decrease in revenues is due to the waiving of the Woolsey Fire rebuilding permit fees and is further compounded by the operational expenditures necessary to expedite that rebuilding process, which are projected at just over $2 million. Staff recommends a one-time appropriation of approximately $2.99 million from the general fund undesignated reserve to maintain a balanced budget. Total expenditures are projected at $54.9 million. The general fund expenditure budget is $37.4 million and includes not only city operating expenses, but ongoing expenses related to the Woolsey Fire and some one-time capital projects that are being funded with general fund dollars. Other major expenses include $12.6 million of special revenue expenses, Legacy Park project fund expenses are budgeted at $2.6 million. The Civic Center water treatment facilities operating budget is projected to be $1.6 million. The Civic Center water treatment facility's operating budget is projected to be one point six million dollars, and all the expenses for operating the facility will be reimbursed through assessments to the connected properties in phase one. A breakdown of total expenditure shows that thirty-nine percent of the total expenditure budget will go to operating and maintenance, twenty percent to personnel, fifteen percent to capital projects, and sixteen percent to public safety. We've separated out the Woolsey Fire, so it's clear which expenditures are related to that. Four percent will go to ongoing Woolsey Fire operating costs, including consultants, community outreach, and fu- future storm response. And six percent will go to fire and storm-related facility and infrastructure repairs. Staff is coordinating with FEMA and CalOES to account for these projects and will be implementing some, but not all of them in the coming year. FEMA and CalOES cover ninety-three point seven five percent of the eligible costs. The city's responsibility is six point two five percent. The same breakdown of the general fund shows operating and maintenance expenses at thirty-eight percent, personnel at thirty percent, public safety at twenty-five percent, and capital projects at just under a, a single percent. That's because to achieve the waiving of fees, we did a reduction on capital projects funded by the general fund wherever possible and put them off either to future years or found other revenue sources to implement the projects. When you examine the city's expenditures by department, you can see that the largest general fund expense is public safety at nine million dollars, which makes up about twenty-seven percent, and this is fully in line with the council saying that public safety is their first priority, and that is where the bulk of the money is going to. Uh, this is followed by management and administration at eight point three million dollars, three point eight million dollars for Environmental Sustainability Department, three point two million dollars for planning, two point nine million dollars for community services, and two point four million dollars for public works. In fiscal year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, the ongoing debt service on bonds is two point one million dollars, and the Woolsey Fire operating expenses totaled just over two million dollars. Budgets for the ongoing operational costs and the capital improvement projects related to the Woolsey Fire have been separated in their own budget pages to allow for better tracking. Both the operational expenses and the capital costs are anticipated to last several years. Operational costs are projected to be two million dollars, and capital costs are projected at three point six million dollars for the upcoming fiscal year. Public safety, as we've mentioned, remains the city's highest priority. Law enforcement is a major part of that public safety mission. The city will spend over eight point one million dollars on its contract with the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department next year, which includes six hundred and seventy thousand dollars for the beach team. This represents an increase of four point five percent for the county's required administrative increase and the liability trust fund. And just to sort of put the liability trust fund into perspective of that total eight point one million dollars, it is about eleven percent of the total, so just approaching nine hundred thousand dollars um, of the contract is reserved for that particular item. Other notable expenses in the public safety budget include homeless outreach services and our contract with Los Angeles County Animal Control. Uh, the fiscal year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty proposed budget also includes a hundred thousand dollars to begin planning for warning sirens in the city. Additionally, as we've mentioned, um, to continue to increase the city's public safety coverage, we did add a fire safety liaison position at the mid-year, and we're thankful that Jerry is here two weeks on the job, and it's a relief to have extra help on this arena. Forwarding problems. Here we go. In fiscal year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, the city must make debt service payments on Legacy Park, City Hall, and Tranqus Field, and these payments will total three point two million dollars. The city will not have debt service payment on the new land acquisition in the next fiscal year. Debt service will start in fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one in the amount of five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. In the following years, that amount will be one point two million dollars. The proposed budget includes eight point two million dollars for capital projects. Ongoing multi-year projects include the Street Overlay Project, improvements to Pacific Coast Highway, and other Measure R projects. There are also clean water projects and minor improvements to city facilities, including electric vehicle charging stations. The solar carport structure, as we mentioned before, has been postponed to a future year. Um, and I will mention that the electric vehicle charging stations are being funded out of other funds, not general funds. Um, we, we're using mostly all um, AQMD money to implement that project. I will mention again that we are continuing work on phase two of the Civic Center Water Treatment Facility. The design and the assessment district engineering will begin in the next fiscal year using one point seven million dollars in grant front, funds. The proposed budget includes funding for eighty-three full-time employees, the equivalent of thirteen point five employees working as part-time staff, and the equivalent of a half a full-time position um, in student interns. And the student intern positions were reduced by three full-time equivalent positions for the proposed budget. This was another cost-saving measure to achieve the waiving of Woolsey Fire rebuilding fees. All salary ranges, positions, and benefits are approved by the council as part of the final budget, which will come back in June. The city typically provides an annual cost-of-living adjustment to employees. The adjustment is derived from the Consumer Price Index using an annual percentage from February. A cost-of-living adjustment of two point five percent has been included in the proposed budget. And we'll show this slide again, the um, ongoing costs of public employee pensions and retiree health benefits continue to be a difficult topic for many municipalities. Even though the CalPERS contribution rates, which are now at seventeen point eight seven percent for classic employ- employees and seven point oh seven percent for new employees have been increasing, staff has worked towards lowering costs. The proposed budget projects forty-six classic employees, which represents a decrease from ten, by, of ten from the prior year. So, this is what we were actually looking to have happen when Pepper came about in twenty twelve. The goal was that Pepper employees, whose benefits are not as um, heavy a burden on cities, um, would begin to outnumber the classic employees, and you can see on our chart here that this is happening for us. And this is something that we continue to monitor and have consultants who work with us to do that. In addition to our pension costs, the city will pay two hundred and eleven thousand dollars next year to cover health insurance for its existing retirees. And by requiring five years of employment before health benefits are vested, the city is limiting future liability. Um, and the city has been putting money aside to cover these costs for the future. In the next year, the city will contribute five hundred and fourteen thousand dollars to these other post-employment benefits as we are mandated to do by law. Each year, the council awards funds to local nonprofit groups through the general fund grants program. This year's proposed budget included a hundred and ninety thousand dollars for the grants. Thirty-nine applications totaling almost one million dollars were received. The Administration and Finance Subcommittee met on May second to discuss the grants. The Subcommittee recommended reducing the available grant amount by thirty thousand dollars to save funds for the proposed Woolsey Fire fee waivers and awarded grants to twenty-six applicants. Since the publication of the budget staff report, um, KBO sent a notice to council withdrawing its application. This recommendation from the Subcommittee was to award fifteen thousand dollars to KBO. This amount is now unencumbered. The proposed budget anticipates a starting general fund undesignated reserve of twenty-three point eight million dollars and an ending reserve of twenty point seven million dollars. The total of all funds at the end of this fiscal year will be thirty-one point six million dollars and a projected ending balance for next fiscal year of twenty-four point six million dollars. All the facility and infrastructure repair projects from the Woolsey Fire must be completed by the city and submitted for reimbursement to FEMA. Historically, these reimbursements have taken years to be received. In the proposed budget, we are showing these FEMA costs as a liability against the general fund in the amount of five point eight million dollars. In addition to the undesignated reserves, the council has approved specific projects with set-aside funds that are tracked separately as designated reserves. Some are funded with general fund revenue, but others are funded with special revenue like gas taxes or highway funds. Legacy Park revenue comes from the lease payments of the commercial tenants. The funds you see in the Civic Center Water Treatment Facility line are the prepaid assessments by the city and the county of Los Angeles. The city is holding these funds, and they will be used to pay back the loans and bonds issued for construction. At the start of the fiscal year, the city had a general fund undesignated reserve of more than a hundred percent of the annual general fund operating budget. This enabled the city to spend thirteen million dollars of its reserves to complete the land acquisition in September of twenty eighteen, while leaving reserves of over seventy percent. Since that time, the city has used some reserves to respond to the Woolsey Fire. At the April twenty-fourth budget meeting, council directed staff to maintain a sixty-five percent reserve while evaluating the fiscal impact of waiving one hundred percent of the like-for-like and like-for-like plus ten percent of Woolsey Fire rebuilding fees. This fee waiver and the projected decrease in revenues after the fire made this direction challenging. Postponing the solar carport structure got us part of the way there. Department heads and their staff combed the budget at my request multiple times to um, identify any areas where expenditures could be reduced. Finance staff looked at places that special revenue could be used instead of general funds. Staff did identify a large reserve in the Proposition A fund balance um, that could be exchanged with the city of West Hollywood for general fund dollars. All of these measures together enabled staff to present a proposed budget that retains a general fund undesignated reserve of sixty-five percent and waives a hundred percent of the fees. We will bring the final, my slides aren't coming. So that's the, really the end. The final budget will be back for adoption by the council on June twenty-fourth. Um, and I am here to answer questions.
Thank you. Appreciate that very much, Lisa. Well done. And we have one speaker, Craig Hill. And you're up, and have at it.
Hey, you guys all got my letter and read it, I assume? A couple additional points regarding the municipal code section two point three six point one ten compensation. The code implies that the compensation is required because it says that, quote, "No additional compensation shall be paid for expenses incurred by da-da-da, except for seminars and such," but that, it's not suggesting that we don't have expenses. Obviously, there are expenses for site visits and meetings and so forth, so it's implying that some composition, uh, compensation does need to be required. So, I've pointed out that this would really be a drop in a bucket in the ocean compared to the whole budget. And to put a number on that, this represents less than one five-thousandth of the entire city budget. So it's really on the margin. Um, in other terms, you could call it less than the permit for one house, the permitting for one house. If belt tightening is really this severe that this can't happen, then that implies fewer site visits, that we just, I won't at least be going out and doing the site visits. And that implies that our decisions may be less informed and therefore more likely to be continued for further information or even appealed. And if fewer site visits, uh, then that results in, if that results in a, a couple of appeals or even just one lawsuit in addition, then we're looking at a very sort of penny-wise, pound-foolish situation here. We, we should be covering these expenses lest these uh, other things occur. Where do you get that money from? If you're having to balance things, well, we're talking about twelve thousand. That's point zero zero four percent of the total that you're um, pulling in from the reserve, so. You know, you could shave a few off of sirens, off of animal control, uh, you know, a little bit here and there. Or you could just say, hey, we just got fifteen thousand from KBO that we just heard about is unencumbered. That more than covers it right there, so. Uh, I appreciate your time and for considering this and the implications of not doing this. Thanks.
Thank you, Craig. Well done. Half your allotted time. Okay, we're back to the coun-
Just to be clear, I didn't mean that you should be-
We go to the microphone, go to the mic.
The Craig Hill thing says we have to not talk so much?
Yeah. Not, not to suggest you need to be more brief, but just to say that if you could consolidate the public replies by separating out the news replies, then that would be a more streamlined response to the public. That, that was the main point. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, we're back to council. We'll start left to right and right to left. Skyler wants to start?
Rick?
I'll go. I'm ready for action.
Rick, you're up.
All right. Um, first of all, I'd like to say thank you to the staff, in particular, all the finance professionals that you mentioned. Thank you very much um, for doing everything that you can to accommodate the needs of the community in terms of waiving the fees and permits. I think that's really very well done, so thank you sincerely. And I also wanna thank Skyler, who made the solar sacrifice here on something that's super important to him.
I'll be coming back with a microgrid here shortly, so. Don't get too, uh, don't get too excited.
So there's a lot of things that, you know, went by the wayside here, and um, money doesn't grow on trees, and I, I'm very thankful to all the belt tightening that was done by the city, and you know, they, reducing the interns, that's actually, I'm a big believer in that. I think that when interns get to get some exposure to the real world at a young age, it's really beneficial, but even that went by the wayside. And I, and I do wanna note from your historical presentation that the one hundred percent undesignated reserve there at the key moment in history was actually pretty phenomenal. I mean, we would not have been able to do that property acquisition maneuver if you hadn't been running not only a tight ship, but a super tight ship. So thank you very much. I really appreciate that hard work. I'm not supposed to say umm. So is this where I can ask about the Friday, uh, Ju- July fifth thing as a possibility? I mean, can I do that here?
Um, you can ask it to be considered in the budget, um, but we need to bring it back as an item.
Okay, can we bring it back as an item next time? Okay, good. Thank you. One other thing that I-
Do we have consensus on that just to-
Yeah, do we have consensus on that, by the way?
I'd actually like to see that come, item come back with looking at giving the staff a day at the front end and the back end of that holiday weekend, and have it analyzed both ways.
Can you clarify that, please?
I think, I don't, I don't know which day, July fourth falls on.
Thursday.
Thursday? So maybe you look maybe at Labor Day as well as giving staff a little bit more time off them so they can have two longer weekends, and then I think that would be good for them.
We'll bring back an item on that.
All right, well done. Consensus on that? Thumbs up, everybody? Okay, good, good. Uh, this is, on the KBO thing, I would like to suggest that, uh, that money go back to A and F, and then the A and F decide of the other um, applicants who that money should go to. That's my suggestion. That's my suggestion. Does that second on that?
Yes, I would second that. I think it's the smart way to go because otherwise people that weren't part of that meeting would have to go back through every single thing you've done again here in the public forum to be informed. So I think that the ANF Subcommittee should finish its work on that, I think is the proper way to go.
Okay, great. Thanks very much for that support.
Additionally, they might want to look at Craig Hill's presentation because considering what he had mentioned and what I had read in his letter to the entire council, to get $100 a month for a kind of techno nerd work that he does, I think it's, $100 is something we might want to look at times 12 months. It's nominal. It's something we've never looked at, but we might want to explore that.
Okay. One other thing, one... Oh, go ahead.
Can we get clarity on what the consensus in motion is on...
Yeah, to put the KBO money back to the ANF for redistribution to the other applicants.
I second.
All in favor?
Well, I guess we're doing a vote.
This is just to give directions.
It's just to have another ANF meeting that looks at spending the money that would have gone to the KBO grant.
That's correct.
Okay. I think we have consensus on that.
Copy that. I believe we have consensus.
Yes.
Okay. And one other item that I would like to mention before I turn it over, don't mean to hog the mic here in the Craig Hill spirit of brevity. And this is not a budget item, I guess, but I would, I'm interested to see if there's consensus to have the city manager and the staff look for, and we don't have the money for this now, outside funds for possibly acquiring the Yamaguchi property. Does that have consensus?
I would support that.
Okay. Everybody else?
Thumbs up.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you very much.
So Yamaguchi back on the, uh, at the looking list.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just waving my magic wand here, but I'm throwing it over to musicians.
Dude, be careful of that magic stick. That thing's had crazy powers in the past.
Who can actually wield it better than I. And without, that's, that's my last comment. Thank you.
Karen, do you want to go or...
Sure.
Okay, we're going this way this time.
I'll make it brief. I just want to thank Lisa and everybody from the financial staff and all the departments for the belt tightening. Yeah, this is a test, but I think you have the right approach, so I appreciate that. I think everyone does. The 100% fee waivers, that, that's something that was very important to the community. We all heard that message loud and clear, and thank you for finding a way to do that. And it's just, you know, one more step in the road to recovery, so thank you. That's it.
Thank you, Karen. Mikey?
Um, yes. I, we spoke earlier, I'm just, you know, so impressed with the work you've both, you've all done, Lisa, you and your staff and Riva have done on that budget. As a person who does a lot of budgets, wow, I, it just, it really astounds me, the detail, the depth of it, it's just really well done. I felt like I was learning a lot, like, about budgeting while reading it, even though I do them pretty much every single day. So thank you for that. And, and I just, I kind of want to say, I know on the fee waivers that I pushed that forward, I may have put some people in uncomfortable position, I recognize that. I truly believe that in all my many decades in Malibu, this was the biggest event, most tragic event that the city had ever faced. And the trauma and the potential loss of community in certain neighborhoods and just the hardship, it just, the city really, this is a time we could step up and do something to help try and heal our community and keep our neighborhoods hopefully as close to where they were as possible. I think we're going to have some definite, pretty big changes in some of our neighborhoods. I think, I worry that your fee waiver budget is too high because more people are going to sell than we think. So that's my worry about...
Rather be more conservative on this one.
Oh, 100%. So I budgeted my head differently, so I hope yours is right, is what I'm saying, because that would be a really good sign. I want to make sure that when you figured out this number, that we were looking at primary homeowners? Is that, was that calculated or was it all, all...
So the way we got to the numbers originally when we developed the first version of the budget that included the revenue, we used an estimate from the planning department and the building department on what they expected the numbers to come in through planning and then through getting building permits issued. And so we used those numbers, I think it was about 150 properties coming in. The council certainly can add the further direction that these are primary residents, but we didn't go into that level in the estimate for the actual dollar amounts, but, but more than happy to add whatever the council wants.
Yeah, I think that the two things that were mentioned that night, or I know I mentioned, that meeting were that it's for primary homeowners, not for second homes, as a distinct class. And I think Christie agreed that was a different class. Was it Christie or Trevor? I can't remember who it was.
It was Christie that was here, but I think it would be important, Mikey, with that to make sure that it would be a primary homeowner at the time of the fire, so that things aren't getting all switched around.
At the time of the fire, of course, and that the property hasn't been sold. If it's been sold since the fire, that was another exclusion we were looking at because that would mean it was no longer the pri, pri, I don't know, nope. And those are the two that Christie seemed to think were...
I believe that that's in there, but I would ask, defer to Lisa.
So we haven't actually adopted a resolution that will be coming back to the city council on June 24. So I have consensus at this point to add that as a condition in the resolution, we'll do so. So I'd look to the council for that.
Council?
Yes, I believe we did discuss it when Christie was here, and her opinion was that you could legislate that into this program. So I would say what Riva said is correct, and what we should probably do is formulate our opinions on that at 150 because we know we're losing about 10% to sales, and those sales are to non-family members and whatever entity it is, it's not a family member trading title. So those are the considerations I believe will show up soon, and I'm not sure of the exact language of that, but I believe we're on the right track.
Jefferson, I'm asking this, I guess maybe on Mikey's behalf, but do we have consensus for that when that item comes back on the 24th of June, for the language in there to indicate that it's for homes where it was the primary residence at or before the time of the fire? And for 100% of the, the permit fees for the rebuilding costs and that for any homes that were sold after the date or closed after the date of the fire, that, that is, those will not be applicable?
Well, I, I understand where you're headed and I agree with everybody, and I think we're going to get that consensus, but the definitions have to be a little deeper than that. And that's where we'll have to reach out to...
But we're just directing Riva to when the item comes back so that those definitions are in there from staffs, with staffs recommend. Okay?
We will have a chance to throw those definitions in if we don't see it because we understand the depth of how property titles change and how LLCs assume it and whether a family member is part of the LLC. So we'll have to go into that deep definition. I don't want to hold this up to this evening, but we need to come back to that.
I think we understand the intent and we'll do our best to draft it accordingly.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And Craig, on your proposal, I didn't get a chance to read your email today. I did see it come in, but I was busy and, but I saw the one before. I think the only issue I have, I mean theoretically, I don't have an issue with it, but I haven't studied it. I have, I don't think anyone's studied it. I don't know, I saw one part in your original email that mentioned going to lunch with fellow members, point of the expenses. I thought that was an interesting expense to try and have in there. So I don't know what the parameters would be. I don't know how it's been done. So to me, if we were to go down that path, I'd want to, yeah, I don't, I don't know if, I don't, yeah, exactly. I just need a little more. I have no clarity at this point at all on that, so, not that I've...
In the meantime, I'll just tell people site visits are, are not...
Well, let's, well, the depth of this is probably for later.
I mean, I think the history of Malibu's been, you know, has never even considered that, and it came out of nowhere, and you know, you got to have to give us a little breadth to even consider a change like that. I mean, it's just, you know, that would be my opinion on that. I mean, I hear you loud and clear.
I would just add, and I was going to ask Riva if she could kind of give us any history and maybe come back with something if there's anything that any nearby cities do related to that. But I do know that when anybody takes the planning commission job and has in the past, that they did that knowing that that stuff was not paid for. And I know that that's a very burdensome thing, as I know it is being a council person, where you do get a very small stipend and you do get some of your mileage covered. But, you know, I don't even report my mileage for driving to City Hall tonight, right? And I don't know if anybody else does or not, but these are things that when, I know for me personally, when I signed up for that job, I went around and talked to the other people that were in office and what was expected. And I, I know that it sort of feels like you're in a volunteer position sometimes. And that's a difficult thing to process sometimes, but that's where the structure of our government, the way it's set up was. Now, if we were to change that, that's a different conversation. But I would ask Riva that if council wants to entertain this, that we look at what other cities do nearby. And that would be, look at other contract style cities and the city government that we have and see how that happens, you know? And then also some financial analysis. But at this time, I do not recommend doing it until that information's before us. And I know that staff is stretched thin right now with everything that they're dealing with. So I, I kind of have trouble doing that at this time. But at the same time, all of us, I think, hear you very loud and clear, but I, and, you know, maybe the mileage thing's a starting point, I don't know, but without having that data, I could not make that decision.
Could I ask a question? Is, have we had a request as a city from any other commissioner, planning commission or otherwise for this kind of expense or reimbursement?
Not that I can reflect in the time, the 14 years that I've been here, but it might have missed me, but I'm not aware of any other requests.
Okay, move. So Skyler, you still on it?
Yeah, I had a...
Go back to Rick after that.
A couple more comments. So there's a couple things in the budget that Lisa pointed out that I think is very important for us to really consider and be aware of as we move forward. The liability trust fund costs, which continue to increase in regards to the sheriff's department are a joke, and they need to get their act together. So I don't know how best to do that and what they're doing internally, but anything based on what the sheriff for the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department said at the Contract Cities Meeting seemed like complete BS and a campaign stunt, and I think the guy's kind of full of it. So that's my two cents, and that's how I feel about how our city's being served. This is nothing to take away from the gentleman that's standing right there and every other person that wears a uniform, but the leadership is a joke. And what he's done to our city and the leadership at our city is a joke. And I say that as a public official, I wrote a letter that was very critical of his actions, and I don't do his job, and that's not what I do. But I'm on the ground in my community, and I listen to people and I hear them. And what's going on and the way that certain people are being, have been dealt with is very frustrating. So if he's going to continue the actions that he's done in his leadership role, I think the city ought to look at how better they can cut their budget and put different resources into the community to ensure public safety because clearly we're not getting it from his leadership. I'm sorry, that's a little bit of a stern comment, but the other thing that I would add in, within that, is the beach team budget. The beach team budget has increased a lot, and I think that with today's advent of weather systems and forecasting, that the beach team could do a much better job of their deployment. And I know that hopefully they'll be under the leadership of, I believe it's Jim Braden this year, who's an amazing sheriff and really understands our community. And I think that I would really ask them if they can figure out a way to trim that budget so that we can get more cars out in the community at late hours because that's something that I, I think sometimes doesn't always make sense to me to send a bunch of people to the beach when it's not crowded.
I've already made that request, council member.
That's because you're so on top of it. My next warning...
And we did deploy that, those same resources last year in the evening because we knew that there were people on the beach late in the evening, and we want to make sure that those were addressed properly. So we, we have done that.
The other thing in terms of our public safety cost, I think that we should draft a letter to the MRCA that says if they can't maintain their own public safety, we're going to start sending them a bill for all of our resources that get taken away every time we get a call to their parks. Because they're, they're not the ones that are showing up. And we're continuing to have members of the county sheriff's department, you know, search and rescue team respond to their, their assets that they're not managing. And that's, we're never going to not respond because we have very, very good public safety here from the sheriffs to the EMTs, to the lifeguards, to the firemen and women that serve our community. It's just really frustrating to see the way that those are getting managed, you know? And I think that the state struggles with that sometimes because of budgetary issues, but it seems like, and so does the park service, but we're continuing to have problems in certain areas. And if those trails can't be maintained and they can't handle the visitors that they're saying, "Come here, we want you to explore this," then it's just burning in our community. And then when our residents, you know, or a visitor calls 911 for something else, it takes a fire truck or a paramedic unit another 20 minutes to respond, and that's not fair. So I don't, I mean, I know that public safety is a priority. It's a big part of our budget. The county, our, our tax dollars don't necessarily pay the fire department. That comes out of our taxes before they come to us. But I'm just trying to be a better advocate within this budget for our residents. So those are my, that was where I was cautioning was the, you know, I'd see that the sheriff's department budget is continued to increase, and then we have a leader at the top who's making decisions and going off and, you know, putting people back to work in the uniform that is not probably the, the best leadership example from how I see it. I don't know the details of all those cases, and that's not to, to take away from anyone that's, you know, gone and, you know, I believe heavily in forgiveness and those kinds of things, but I just don't think that that's the best example, and it doesn't represent where our, my thoughts as someone that's in charge of, you know, some public safety for our city really care for spending money on. And the next thing is my next CalPERS warning, which I'm glad that that was restructured when I came into office in 2012 and that the city made that a priority. But we need to be very wise in how we look at that increasing ballooning budget because I know that, I don't know if there's been analysis done on how many staff we're going to have retiring in the future or in the near future, but I have great concern if those expenses really get exponentially higher in the future. And those are things that we spend a lot of money on, and I, just in terms of like future planning and stuff, I am cautioning us, you know, just to really pay attention to that. Those are my kind of long budgetary notes. Sorry, Craig. I know that you wanted to say something else. But in terms of, I don't see us getting to a place right now where we're going to vote to do that, but I would like to see some bit of a discussion happen between Riva and our city attorney on how best to deal with that. That's what I would like to see have happen. And maybe that can come back to the, the council as a separate item with a expenditure ceiling, you know? It's just when you look at one commission, then you have to do it for all the commissions. And it, all of a sudden, what seems like not a lot of money goes from being $12,000 a year to being a lot more than that. And based on us having to tighten the straps, that's, it's a hard time, thing to swallow, I think, at this point. And I don't know where everybody lies on that. I'm just saying, I am so grateful for your service to our community, for each one of our commissioners' service to our community. And I, you know, at the same time, when I, as I'm saying this, I'm knowing that the knowledge that you bring and the boots on the ground and those, those opinions and, you know, the, just the history to each one of those meetings is very important. So it's, it's kind of, I feel like kind of conflicted. I'm saying like, yeah, go out there and work for free. But that's sort of the way that it's worked for a long time, and maybe it'll change. I don't know.
If only it were for free.
You'd have to come up to the microphone.
Well, we didn't invite him up, but we're, we're moving on, and we'll hear from Craig in the future. I was wondering if we might get down to the other end of council and hear from Rick or Karen.
I think I already made my comments, but I, I just want to say, you know, Mikey, you're, we're a planning commissioner for six years, so whatever you say on it in the future, I will be listening to. So thank you.
Copy that. Karen? Okay. Mikey? Okay.
I was just going to say, yeah, like I said...
I was just going to say, yeah, I, like I said before, I just would have to, I mean, as a financial guy, I would have to have a budget analysis, and I don't know what's involved in it, or how it's, how it would be run. I don't, you know, I'd have all those kind of questions like any other line item that has to be fully figured out. That's the only way I know how to do it. And, uh, I have not brought that up before, you know, it's been super busy here. So I think that's another, the timing's tough. I mean, I know we've all had 10,000 priorities, so, uh, not that it's not a, a really good point. It's just been, you, could you pick a crazier time right now? I mean, you know, so, but that, that's my thoughts right now.
Thank you, Mikey. I'll address one other thing after, I, I did mention Craig's position earlier on Skylar's comments about the LA County Sheriff. I had the opportunity, uh, last week to have a brief meeting, uh, and a number of members of the community were there. And since it is $8.1 million of our budget, which is our biggest single item, it looks like for public safety, uh, it's a huge amount. They do look at it. Having had the opportunity to wear the badge and be on the beach team in the late eighties, I do have some knowledge of the politics of being in the Sheriff's Department. It's a huge department. The LA County Sheriff's Department is the largest Sheriff's Department in the United States. And, uh, I believe that we need to reach out and make the demands as a city to have a meeting with, uh, the LA County Sheriff himself and his staff.
That's BS because I did, and he won't return my calls, so I'm over him.
Okay, well, thank you. And so I appreciate your position, Skylar, but, um, we are a council, and each one of us is 20% of an opinion. You've made your opinion and expressed it in several ways and several fashions, which I appreciate because you make it evident. And, um, I would have the same position if I was equally sharing the frustration that you do. However, we try and overlook our personal frustrations and make an expression as a council. So the guy is new in office, and we should have those chances to discuss it with him rather than a one-on-one. So the budget has already been put out at 8.1, I believe it is. Riva, it's somewhere in that range?
That's correct. That's based, um, on the same level of service that we had the prior year.
Roger that. So, uh, I'm going to propose that we move on with the budget, and, um, maybe we could consider in two weeks, put it on an agenda item just to, uh, have a reach out for the LA County Sheriff to come and speak to the council. I think it's valuable. I think it's an educational moment for all of us, as well as the people who are paying for that, who are out there. And we need to express that to-
I would love to do that. I cannot support that man standing here if he's going to lie to us.
Well, uh, okay. Let me re-
And if he continues to listen to somebody who continues to spew non-factual evidence to him, I will not tolerate that person coming in here, and I will not welcome him.
Ma- Mayor, can I just, um, add that, um, uh, Mayor Protem Farah and I did meet as part of the COG with, um, the sheriff about two weeks ago when he held a town hall, um, in Agora, um, for all of the Lost Hill Sheriff Station cities. And at that time, I did ask if he would be, uh, willing to come and do another town hall meeting in Malibu, and he said yes, so I'll certainly follow up with that with his office.
And I also asked him the same thing, and he actually didn't really answer me as well. But, um, I, I think, to your point, Skylar, I understand how you're upset. But in, in my world, that's exactly who you want coming, somebody that you're not seeing eye to eye with, that you can try and forge a working relationship, because we have no choice, and that's exactly who we should get to know better, and just-
Mikey, I don't disagree with you. I'm just telling you that I tried to reach out to the guy. And he just has assistant after assistant after assistant respond and continues to go to the newspapers and spew stuff from C.C. Woods. It's a joke. It's a complete utter joke.
So-
And so is she.
Okay, thank you. And I think what we'll do, as a council possibly, we will take a different road or a path that might entertain everybody here, as well as the constituents who pay these obligations to the Sheriff's Department, and have a meeting with him and then have those expressions. We all share frustrations from time to time, and we have to overlook some of those sometimes and look for a higher path. And I would encourage you to participate in that and make these expressions and, uh, get this out in the open. And that's just the path I would suggest. And, um, I'll move forward with Riva. And those of you that met with him and Karen, who will be up next at this podium and, uh, taking over when I bail, and that'll probably be your issue to deal with. But I think we have to keep these doors open.
I, I absolutely do support that. I want to be very clear with that. It's just really frustrating when you see someone come and do something, and it's like every speech is like a campaign speech. And it's like, dude, you're not running a campaign right now, we need you to do your job. And that's the feedback that I get from people, from seeing him at the California Cities thing, not just myself. And I think that that's important, and I don't want to not say something about it. I've been vocal about that. The other thing that I wanted to add to you, which was in response to the budgetary item about the siren system and warning system, um, I've been doing some more research on that. And I strongly suggest that the city look at a company out of Australia called Attentis and look at installing that kind of a satellite-based, non-hooked-up-to-the-grid, um, system on city property and/or work with the county to get nodes placed throughout our Santa Monica Mountains that would indicate to us right away, rain or shine, smoke or no smoke, whether or not there's a fire, when it starts and where it starts, and it would continually monitor it. That's it.
Okay, I did look into those as well, because originally we had requested $1 million from Riva in the city budget, um, originally. And just to let the people know how these systems work briefly as I can, it's, you know, it's a warning bell that you hear, and it tells you now you go to this for, to follow up on the details. So you're not going to hear the complete warning, you'll get the notification, and then you go to this. So these systems are very advanced, and I appreciate you looking into it as I have, because they use them on military bases as well. And, um, I encourage us all to explore that, but that's, we, this is budget night, and let's talk budget. So, back-
If we're, we're going to be appropriating, I think you said, like $100,000 towards that, I want to be very clear that the system is not just a siren-based system. I want to be, I'm more of an advocate for, the siren system is great, but if you don't have the system that tells the siren system to go off in place, it does really nothing for us. Like, we should be able to be monitoring the mountains. Like, if certain people hadn't have called 911 and been awake when the fire started right behind City Hall, right? That, that, that critical time is what I think is most important to the safety of our residents. A siren is awesome. But if we had known that the fire started five minutes before, and I'm not saying that in the Woolsey Fire situation that this would, that this would have helped, my biggest concern would be like the fire that happened up Corral. Because those kind of things that happen in the middle of the night can cause a lot more destruction and death.
Um, so the $100,000 that's included in the budget is for planning and design at this point. Um, city, uh, Lisa and Susan have applied for a hazard mitigation, uh, grant that would actually install the sirens. So the council will certainly have more opportunities to discuss, um, the path that we take for the sirens. At this point, we've just added some funds to start that process. But we'll certainly be back in front of you with, um, an RFP for what we're looking for and all of those details. So, um, rest assured, this is just the very beginning of the process.
Thank you for that elaboration, and thank you. And then Karen, you had a comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, um, regarding the sheriff, yes, uh, I was at the Agora Town Hall meeting a couple of weeks ago. Mikey was there, Riva was there, can't remember who else was. Yeah, a couple of Malibu residents. I know the sheriff was approached, uh, by some of you after that meeting about coming to Malibu. My understanding is he has been approached, uh, in the past about coming to Malibu, hasn't made it here, uh, to City Hall yet to address us and our constituents. We were in the presence of the sheriff and met with him briefly, uh, at two different, um, uh, events. One, um, both with Contract Cities. One was the LA County Local Advocacy Day downtown. And the other one was at the annual municipal seminar that some of us were just out at the desert. So I, I don't think the sheriff, um, has not been here yet due to lack of trying. But I do echo some previous comments that we should continue to invite him and, um, hopefully set something up soon.
Thank you for that in-depth clarification, Karen. And now we're back to budget again.
I'll second your motion to approve the budget.
Okay, we have a second, any further conversation?
To give staff direction to return the budget, we're actually approving the budget type.
What Trevor said.
Okay, so we have a second, and, um, is everybody prepared to vote? Okay, all in fi- all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you, moving on. Hey, we're on to, oh, we have two items, uh, on 6A, two speakers on 6A. Let me just get to it. Okay, so we have probably a presentation by Lisa or somebody from staff on this, and then we have several speakers after that on 6A.
Yeah, so ju- this is just a sort of a quick briefing on what we have included in the staff report. So we are coming back to you because we were requested to bring back an item to consider, um, preparing a measure to go to the voters to increase transient occupancy tax from 12% to 15%. And at the time, council was interested in coming back, um, at a special election and looking at that. In, as we've laid out in the staff report, transient occupancy tax is a general tax, and general taxes are usually taken to the voters at general, they have to be taken to the voters at a general election. If you were to, um, want to take this at a special election, you actually then have to designate the funds and specifically earmark how they will be used, and you cannot change that again without going back to the voters. Additionally, at a special election, you need a two-thirds vote. And in a general election, um, on a general tax, you need only 50% plus one. And then the next general election would be November 3rd, 2020. So that would be the soonest general election that we could put this tax on. And if you have any questions, um, we're here to answer them.
Thank you. And, uh, we have two public speakers. First up is Norm Haney, followed by Scott Dietrich on 6A.
Good evening, uh, city council members, Chair Wagner. Malab- Malibu has a lot of opportunities to offer visitors. And we have, uh, very few overnight accommodations for those visitors. Other areas that are popular to visitors have, uh, TOT tax of 13, 14, and 15%. Malibu has, uh, a, a lot of costs associated with their safety, uh, a lot of maintenance on their roads. And all of this is, part of it anyway, can be attributed to those visitors. So the bottom line is, if we increase the TOT tax of 3%, up 3% from 12, we're increasing the revenue to the city of 25% based upon the standard 12%. And I'm very much in favor of it. I think it's a good idea, and-
Are you going on the record saying that you want to raise taxes, Norm? I just want this to be completely official. Sorry to interrupt you, I just wanted to crack a smile.
No, I absolutely am, uh, in favor of it. And, uh, I think we need the money, and I think we provide the services, uh, that it will not deter people from coming to, to Malibu, increasing the occupancy of, of those facilities that currently, um, that currently are, are available, uh, for them to use. And so those are my comments.
Thank you, Norm, encouraging. And Scott Dietrich, you're up for our final speaker on 6A.
Thank you, I'll try to make this brief. Yeah, we need more revenue, but, uh, I think most of our visitors come out for the day and short of putting a toll bridge in, um, on Malibu Canyon and Kane, and I, I don't think we're going to get very far with that. But what my concern is with raising this tax, um, is I think it's hurting those in our community that are struggling to stay here, that they're renting a room, they're renting part of their house. That's the one side of the short-term rentals. So I don't like imposing something on them, and they will pay for it. But I'd also, if we're going to raise taxes on short-term rentals, we have a different group of individuals, or maybe it's corporations, that cause a lot of problems. And that's the Airbnbs that are owned by corporations. I've even heard that, uh, there's somebody who's bought like four Malibu houses. And, uh, just to do short-term rentals, there's, I, I remember one apartment owner when we had that big discussion. He said, "Well, we only keep 30% of our total units allocated to short-term." And I'm thinking, this does not help our community, but since we don't seem to want to divide things up and prevent problems and limit them to owner occupied, maybe the best way to handle this is to say, "Okay, if it's non-owner occupied, do 20% and leave for owner occupied back at the 12th." Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Scott. And now we're up to comments from the council on 6A. Who would like to start? Mikey said he's on it.
I, I'd like to start only because I brought this item forward originally. And, um, I've thought a lot about this, and I'm very, very much appreciate your words, Norm. We have a huge burden here in Malibu. We have 12, 13,000 people at the most, or we had. And we have, what, 13 to 15 million visitors a year? And yes, not all of them pay TOT, there's no doubt. But the cost of dealing with that on our, on everything, not only the city and our budget, but on the residents is, is huge. We pay a huge cost here in Malibu. And to have a TOT lower than the surrounding, lower than Santa Monica by almost three points, lower than Houston by six points, for example, because it's just there, it makes no sense. It makes no sense. And so this is one area where we can get a little help paying for those resources. As far as hurting individuals like, you know, single moms owning a short-term rental, something like that, which is, is something I can concern, this is, this fee will not affect them at all. This is a fee that if you go on Airbnb anywhere in the country, it's just part of what's paid automatically. It, it, and it's so, whether it's somewhere 10% or 18%, it's just part of the fee. And I see absolutely no evidence in anything I've read or looked at that this had any impact, uh, to hurt an individual in Malibu at all. My hope is that, you know, as we go through this disaster we've been through, it'll help us provide services to better capture. And I have another worry that feeds into this. We have 13 to 15 million residents a year, and our local businesses don't survive. It absolutely makes no sense. I have hopes in the future, to be honest, which is not on the table here tonight, that the city can be a part of helping our local businesses do and, and receive more benefit from the massive amount of people coming here. There's some very simple reasons it's not happening here, in my opinion, but it'll take quite a while to- There's some very simple reasons it's not happening here, in my opinion, but it'll take quite a while to, to fix. So I think this is a start. This, we're an international destination. And I just think this makes, is just logic to me. This makes perfect sense. And I really hope we can put this on. I can hear, I, I don't know, I could be swayed by general or special, but I hear more of a general, a general election on this. I think the citizens would be in favor of this as well, and I think it makes sense for the city. And I think it's important to the long range of actually taking care of our local businesses and providing the services to support that and to, and to support public safety in Malibu. So that's my thoughts. Thanks.
Thank you, Mikey. Next up, Skylar or Rick?
I can go.
Go, Skylar.
So when Jim was our city manager, we had a conversation about this increasing it. I don't think at the time, I was in favor of increasing it. The rest of the council didn't want to do it. Or I forget if we had an item on it or the city managers, we didn't, we wound up not getting around to it. But Riva, is there a, or Trevor, is there a reason why the 15% was selected? Is that a ceiling? Is there any law that prevents us from going higher than that, or where did that number come from?
I, I basically have spent a lot of time dealing with other cities' TOTs as I work with various groups around the country.
What is Santa Monica's?
It is just about 15. It's actually, there's more than one way to skin a cat. So theirs is 14 plus another, what's called a TID, which gets it to about, I'd say, 14, 7, 5. So basically 15.
Did you look at any other coastal cities in California?
Yeah, they range all over the place. Some are much higher, some older ones are lower. It's one of those things that cities don't revisit like ours. By the way, we inherited 12%. We never decided on 12%. We just kept it that way, which is obviously in the staff report here. So it's, it's all over the place, but generally cities that are trying to capitalize on the fact they have an influx of tourists have risen their TOT to provide services to make that all make sense.
So I would propose, my, my next question is for Riva. When is the soonest, if we directed staff that we could come back, or Trevor, and do a special election to do this?
Heather will get to that.
Backing everything out, it looks like November this year would be the soonest. And that would have to come back to council very quickly.
Okay, and then, so the reason why I'm asking that question, Mikey, is because of the amount of stuff that's going on here, because of the amount of money it costs our public safety services, and/or that we want to do certain things with certain things in the city, whether it be for youth or seniors or on our existing property and improving those facilities. I think it's smarter to do it sooner than waiting all the way till the general, and the next general election would be when?
2020.
November of 2020.
No, but that's, I was asking about a special election.
November of this year would be the special, the soonest.
But that's, and that would be, so it would be either, it wouldn't matter then which way we decided to go, is that what you're saying?
It would be one year different.
It would be one year earlier.
It would be one year advanced if we did it now.
Well, one costs money to the city and the other one doesn't, right?
But the revenue that we would receive over the course of that year would be far less, or than, would be far more than the cost of doing that election. And we would get pretty good data back on the results. What I would suggest actually is that we do both. And that in, in the meantime, we increase it to 15% next year, put something on the ballot, and bring an item back that specifies what that additional 3% is for. I would suggest that it goes for public safety, land, 1% for public safety, 1% for land acquisition, and 1% for improving existing facilities. Or to go parks, or to make it specific and say, you do it all. 1% for public safety and 2% for improving existing parks and facilities. Or a combination thereof, and that that come back to us and get on a ballot in November and increase it to 15%. And then secondly, the following November, I would propose that we do, if the council agrees and we can get a vote, in the even year, that we get a general election item on there that increases it to potentially a higher percentage, depending on how that vote happens, and make it go directly to the general fund.
I'm going to give you a reason why that would probably be difficult. The reason is, and I, well, I feel a little awkward saying this in public. There is a potentially another tax coming already. So the Chamber of Commerce has been working very hard with the Canejo Valley Chamber of Commerce, which runs what's called a TID, which is a tax. What's that?
It also pays for transportation in some of those.
And so the TID that they do have in Canejo Valley.
Do you mind explaining the acronym?
Yeah, the Canejo Valley one is an interesting one. It's only hotels, obviously. And they, they actually create a marketing fund of which 20% of what you contribute goes back to that same entity, which is an interesting way of doing it. So that whole thing is moving forward, so we would be colliding with that. And they're well aware of what's happening here tonight.
I'm just completely not in favor of the developer nonsense, and I don't believe in it at right now at this point. I think that you need to be very wary. This community has a long history of its challenges with tourism. And I'm not saying that we don't need those kind of improvements to business districts or whatever else. But I'm saying that the community and the people that live here has changed a lot, there's no question. But I am not in favor of putting, I think that, from what I hear from people, and if we want to talk about housing, which is, it ties right into this. When you're looking at short-term rentals, and people need to wise up to the fact that in LA, you have a massive amount of homelessness is going crazy, just like it's going crazy here, and it's directly correlated to housing. And if you continue to take all of these homes, apartments, and everything else, and make them short-term rentals, and every city continues to rely on this revenue, that you're going to create, the data does not lie when you look at New York, when you look at Santa Monica, when you look at Los Angeles in terms of how the quote-unquote Airbnb short-term vacation rental market is affecting housing. And that's a much larger issue. But in the meantime, right now, we're not having an item come forward that bans Airbnb. And until we get to that point, I think that it's fiscally responsible for the city to, to put that out to the voters. And it is fiscally responsible for this council to put that out to the voters in November. And hopefully, we'll take a close look at Airbnb and how that works. I also believe that the, you know, the city may need to consider how it looks at its contracts with Airbnb and other things. Because the, the power is with the city and how it levies its taxes, and it doesn't need to be ran by corporations. That's already going on enough in our government. You know, we're here, we're in nonpartisan election, we want to commute, keep our communities and our neighborhoods intact. And this is a way that's being destructive of it with short-term rentals. If anything, you would look at getting a higher tax on Airbnb and a lower tax on the existing hotels. But that's, I don't know how you would divide that. So the, I don't, you, you just told me that you wanted to do something where in there, this TID tax goes on the hotels, and they get to get the improvement onto their property, or in the front of their property.
Could I make a suggestion?
You didn't allow me to explain that.
Yeah, I, let's, let's spread the opinions out. And I think Karen wanted to speak and elaborate. Thank you, Karen.
Thank you. I too was at the presentation at Pepperdine made by our Chamber of Commerce and the Canejo Valley Chamber of Commerce. And just for the record, my understanding is TID stands for Tourist Improvement District. It was explained to us, I would not be able to repeat it. My first suggestion would be, if we're going to think about that, let's have the chamber, either our own or Canejo or the two of them, come and give a presentation on what the Tourist Improvement District is, what it does, how it functions. And let's just leave it at that. I'd rather not consider that right now. The next thing is, Scott, I don't, I don't think the owner would be absorbing the cost of an increase in transient occupancy tax. I, my impression is that that cost would be passed along, just like another increase in maintenance or something like that. So I don't think that in particular is a concern. So I just wanted to say those two things. I, I think we're maybe getting a little off track here. So, you know, what we're talking about, it looks like whether or not to look at an increase of 12% to 15. And if so, whether to do that in a special election, which sounds like the soonest it could be is November of 2019. If that were a special election with a special designation for the funds. And if not, then we, if we do decide this is something we want to do, look at a general election, and the revenue from that would go to the general fund. So.
Is there anything to stop us from doing both?
Sorry, what's that?
My, my, my comment about, I don't think that there's anything to stop us from doing both of them. One of them's not going to happen till a time that's further out anyways. And that way, we better prepare staff to know if it goes to the ballot, then, okay. And then for, at least you capture another year of revenue that'll allow us to do things that the city wants to do and then provide more services, right? And then you know that the next year, you can make it go into general fund. And by general fund, it allows you to use it for many different things. So that's sort of the, the difference in the threshold, right? And I think that it's important to know that if you want to go to the, if you're specific with what the money goes for, and Lisa, correct me if I'm wrong, the percentage is lower.
Well, the issue is, if it is, if you, once you take something in a special election, and again, remember that the bar is higher, you need two-thirds.
Correct.
To approve it. You cannot take that away or reallocate it without.
Having another election.
Going back to the election.
Yes, I know that.
And I don't, and I don't think you can undo it by then going back in a general election and asking it to be general fund.
Can't you put both things on the ballot?
That was going to be my next question.
But I leave that to the city attorney.
Equally, I'd like to remind the council and staff and Riva that we are still looking forward to some regulations, and that's coming forward as well. And I know it's lower priority than it was earlier, but it's still on the list. And I look forward to engaging the community with that, as well as the council, when staff is ready and prepared.
Correct. And the first piece of that is doing the financial analysis that the council asked for. And we did interviews last week of financial firms to help us do that. And we're hoping to bring a contract back in June to the council.
Well, thank you, Lisa. That clarification is necessary for all of us to hear so that that ongoing elaboration, waiting for the council's opinion and the staff's output. I would not want to have to have to break that down a second time. And I think staff will come forward with it when they're ready. And like I said earlier, it's, I know you're on it, and thank you for putting that on the top 10 list.
Okay, let me get a comment in here. In general, I'm not big in favor of raising taxes and spending more money. You know, I have to be careful of that sort of thing as a representative of the citizenry. These steps need to be taken judiciously. I'm not totally opposed to it, but it shouldn't be, we shouldn't be shooting from the hip. You know, we're, we're talking about, we got something in front of us, we're talking about maybe putting it on a ballot in a couple of years. And now we're talking about, well, let's put it on, let's put it on this year, let's put it on next year, let's use it for this, let's use it for that. These are, putting taxes on the citizenry, whether it's our own citizens or the visitors, should be done thoughtfully and deliberately, and with an, with an eye as to what the long-term impacts are. Otherwise, you wind up with a state where you're taxing the bejesus out of everybody and making life too expensive for them. I'm not saying we're there, but I do think we need to do a little more homework. Like, what is the nor, the spread of TOT taxes in the neighborhoods around here? Like, what is it in Westlake? What is it in Agora? What is it in Thousand Oaks? And I'd like to have a little more accurate information than, oh, well, you know, some have this, some have that. I'd really like to know what, what those are. Because if we're way behind the par, everyone's charging 18%, and they're having more resources to do, to take care of their town, then that's something we need to consider. I'm not against this thing, and I do think there is a case to be made that we get massive, a massive amount of visitors to our town that's way out of proportion to the actual amount of citizens that we have. So I'm in favor of that. But, I mean, I'm in favor of, of taking that into consideration. The other thing that I think, that we'd have to consider is the short-term rental thing. Because there is a lot of interest in this town for actually, if we can get away with it, getting rid of short-term rentals. There's a lot of interest in that. And before we start counting our money for raising the TOT from 12 to 15 and all the stuff we're going to be able to do with it, if we're serious about contemplating getting rid of that, that's a big item that we need to consider in this whole equation. And I think that, I'm glad to hear that you're doing an analysis of deliberate, because that's reality, that's reality. And if, and if we're thinking, oh, great, we're going to just raise TOT, and we're going to get a whole bunch of money, the, the short-term rental thing goes away, we're going to be looking at a lot less money, even if we do raise it 15%. So those are just general comments. I would like to, I would like to see a little more information about what the average is for, you know, other nearby towns in Southern California, of what they charge. I'm not against raising taxes, I just want it to be an informed decision. And I do think that we need to, before we get too excited about all the new cash we're going to have, there is, and I agree with Jefferson on this, there is a very serious interest, and for all the reasons that you mentioned, Skylar, about getting rid of short-term rentals. If we can pull it off, I think that most people in town would be in favor of it because if you, if you weigh more money or preserve the integrity of the neighborhoods, people are going to go for that. And I'd rather have less money and, and preserve the characters of the neighborhoods. I think that's very important. If, you know, one thing I would like to raise money on, I know we can't do this, but if we could put like a 15 or 25% fee on all those rehabs, we could probably double the city's budget. I mean, in about one year. I know we can't do that.
I think half of them got vaporized.
Yeah, those guys.
And that's not, I'm not trying to be a cynic about that.
Anyway, those are my comments. I'm not, I'm not opposed to it. Like I said, philosophically, I'm generally, don't shoot from the hip on raising taxes on everybody, but if you're going to do it, let's be, let's have it be an informed decision. But let's also be realistic about the fact that I, I think, I think there's a lot of interest in getting rid of short-term rentals. And that's going to have a major impact on any, the overall TOT equation.
Thank you, Rick. And remember equally that we have explored, several, several of the council members have actually looked into the TIDs. And they have, in other communities, have actually funded light transportation within their corridors between the malls, which we used to have here, that was funded by the malls. We had for two summers, the, the jitney that ran between the malls, and I thought it was very successful. But these are what the TIDs can complete on their own, working through the chamber. Now, it's not growth inducing, it's just moving the participants at our community around the civic center. So those things I don't believe we're going to elaborate on this evening. But I appreciate your comments, Rick, and I tend to believe that you're on the right path. And now we'll hear from other comments from Mikey.
Just, I just, Rick, to your comment, you were reminding me, the original germ of when I thought of this was related to STRs, short-term rentals. Because I was, you know, traveled around the country quite a bit, and I was seeing the different rates, talking to a lot of different cities about it, what it means, what it does in short-term rentals, et cetera. Having my own little stories with short-term rentals, and some good, some really bad. And I thought, wow, if we are going to regulate, ban whatever it is on short-term rentals, that, you know, obviously, yeah, cities become used to that feeding on that. So that, the original germ when I thought of this was related to, okay, we should, for our hotels, be on par with what we offer as a coastal amenity. Some of the cities inland are less. Canejo Valley is generally less, but, you know. They don't have the amenities we have at all. They don't have the traffic we have. They don't have any of that. So to your point, my thought was actually originated from seeing where, where we were going with STRs possibly in the future. So just want to make that comment.
Good, thank you.
Comment, Skylar?
I mean, that's like, you know, Mikey and Rick, what you guys are talking about in terms of like, you know, coming on the dole for the revenue source, that's like Airbnb, like Planning 101. Get into a city, start paying them, get them to rely on the money as a source of revenue, and then they won't let it go. And that's like, you watch, we watched the fire happen, we And that's, like, you watch, we watched the fire happen, we watched so many of our longtime residents get displaced, and then we have places that aren't available, or where this cost has skyrocketed. No one's gonna, I mean, the, we can't necessarily fight the fact that the cost of real estate in Malibu has gone up a lot of money, but my, my question about this again is, when are we gonna, I mean, Riva, when are we gonna have the STR item back to council? That's a good question.
So as Lisa just reported, the first step that we needed to do was to get a financial analysis, and we put out a request for proposals for those services, and Lisa and staff conducted interviews of several firms last week, so we expect to award that contract in June, and it'll take, you know, probably a couple months for them to do a thorough analysis. Um, and at the same time, we'll be working, uh, with the Coastal Commission and talking to them about, uh, the proposed ordinance, and then bringing it back to staffs, I mean, to council, I'm sorry.
So we're gonna do all this data and research and stuff, and by the time that gets back to us, it's gonna be next fall? And then by the time that's too late to get something on that ballot, I mean, Heather, if you were to get something on the ballot in November, um, what's the timeline for that? When do you need that completed by?
For this year?
If we were gonna do something, I mean, i- if we did a special, is there anything to stop us from doing it in April of next year?
I, you know, I just want to make a point. I don't think that it's necessary on this item to get the full financial analysis of the impact of short-term rentals going away to make a decision on this. I think that it's probably, for me, it's mostly based on, what are other towns doing? Coastal towns? And wh- how do we stand in, in reality for that? And it's important to keep in mind that some of that money might go away, so I don't think, I don't think you have to wait until this whole Airbnb thing gets sorted out before you decide to put it on the ballot.
Okay, so then my next question for Heather, knowing that, is, can you have an item back to us in June that allows you to get something on the ballot this November that gets the data of looking at other coastal cities and what their percentages are?
We can bring something back for the second meeting in June, um, but the last day to call an election for November, uh, two thousand nineteen is July twenty-second, so it's just, if we come back on the second meeting in June, we only have one meeting in July, so it's gonna make it for a very tight, uh, turnaround for staff to try and make the November, um, special election.
I think if you wait, if we wait for the general election, that gives us more flexibility, right? There's a lower threshold of votes that have to be got, there's more flexibility on what to do with the money-
Correct.
-et cetera. We're not, the, the special election is more onerous, we have to do it too quickly, it locks us in, et cetera. So it's better off just chilling and doing it on the general election, if I'm reading you right.
Can, can I also just say, I, I, I'm not in favor of a special election for all the reasons that Rick just stated. Um, as, as far as, uh, restricting or banning short-term rental, my instinct is to work with the Coastal Commission. We know of other cities that have passed ordinances and then have them shot down. I don't want to waste our time and resources on anything like that. Um, the next thing I would say-
Karen, the Coastal Commission has been very clear that local zoning is very important.
She was in the middle of a comment, so-
Thank you.
We always let everybody finish, and then we come back to you. Thank you.
Um, we do have some longtime residents who do short-term rental. We all know some of them personally. Um, they've done it, uh, they've been licensed, they've done it without incident, they act as ambassadors to the city. Some of them are longtime residents who depend on the income. There are, as we've all heard, some problem owners. The, as far as I can see, the problem is with the owner, and those need enforcement. So those are separate issues. Um, so I'll go back and say, I agree with Rick, and, um, I think with Jefferson, I, possibly with Mikey, uh, that this, I think, would be better as a general election item in November of two thousand twenty, uh, with a lower threshold and, uh, the funds not restricted.
Okay, Skylar, you're up now, okay.
Uh, I think that, I understand why everyone's saying that, I just think that you're gonna be foregoing about five hundred thousand to a million and a half dollars in revenue during that time, and I think that's foolish.
Mikey, do you have any other further comments? Okay, so is there a proposal to move forward on six A in a second? Uh, the way it stands, it sounds like we're prepared to move forward with it as, it's, it's as it looks here on six A, and I need to hear a proposal in a second, yeah.
Was that a, was that a, uh, direction to give, to have staff bring back a, an, an increase in the TOT for the general election? Is that what you meant?
Well, it doesn't sound like Skylar has enough support to, uh, change what is on six A, um, unless I've heard from every, some-
I mean, I, I don't think that there's anything to stop us from bringing back data on both routes, and that can come in a very simple form in June, from Heather. Look at other cities, see what the rates are, that seems to be what the question is, and give us the pros and cons of doing it in this November, or waiting an entire another year, where you're not gonna be getting that revenue at a time when you need it more than ever. That's my comment.
Mayor, can I add something? Sure, sorry. Um, if we're going to move for, I mean, we can certainly do what Councilmember Peak asked to bring back some data, but I do want to just add that we just went through the budget process where we added that we have no additional funds, and the cost to do a special election this year would be a hundred thousand dollars that we would need to take out of reserve, so I just wanted to share that for council consideration as you make a motion.
Additionally, um, the, the cost would be staff time. Not only does they have the original hundred thousand, but we're going to have to dedicate staff to pull out of the top ten and put this on a, even a higher priority, where it's still in the top ten now, so I have a problem with that myself, I don't, I-
We'd have to reorganize the work plan priorities that were provided to us, yes.
Thank you.
Can I just remind the council that whichever way we go takes a four-fifths vote? So it's not just a consensus, yes, yeah, we have to have, we can't have a three-to-two vote.
It's, it's, yeah, it's four-fifths for, uh, if you're putting the general one on, I think you only need a majority for a special.
Yeah, how about a motion where we get a little more information about what other cities are doing, and what would be involved in getting it on the general election in two thousand and twenty? You got a second?
Okay, well, Karen has a motion or a proposal, can we hear, let's hear.
I would like to direct staff, make a motion to direct staff to prepare a measure to submit to the voters to increase transient occupancy tax from twelve percent to fifteen percent in a general election in November of two thousand twenty.
I would second that proposal, including Rick's suggestion that staff can perform that task additionally, which will help us look at the revenue that we may lose if there's an STR, uh, diminishment. So we won't cost a lot of staff time, and we move forward with this process, so I would second that with Rick's, uh, Rick's comment on, uh, elaborating on the information.
So, it was a request for a friendly amendment to bring back, um, additional data when, uh, the item comes back for the general election item?
That's how it appears, if Karen would agree with that, and Rick would agree with that.
The, the data I'm looking for is really, what do other cities doing at this point? You know, I'm, I'm comfortable with that level of information, I need a full-on analysis of, of if we get rid of short-term rentals.
Uh, that's, that seems reasonable, and I, I, I would sec- second both of those additions into the comments.
Can I just be clear that the data we're going to be preparing is the tax rate that other, um, similar cities and coastal cities are charging, including our COG cities, and that's the only data you're looking for? You also want data on short-term rentals? I'm sorry, I'm confused.
That's what I'm looking for.
Sounds like they only want data on percentages.
And you want that next month?
Uh, the data is up to Karen and Rick.
A rate comparison, is that what we're talking about?
I'm not in any hurry to get it.
Okay, 'cause calling the general is not gonna happen until this time next year.
The, the question is when you want that item to return?
Yeah.
Bring it back in the fall.
Leave that up to the staff, yeah, there's no hurry on that.
Okay, so Karen, are you comfortable with that?
Yes.
So, so for the record, with the option that you guys are selecting, you would forego approximately one year of revenue from short-term rentals, which would amount to an amount of approximately one point two million dollars if you don't change the STR law. Foolish.
I believe it's preferable to, uh, putting it on two different elections.
Okay, to, to clarify the, uh, motion then, it's, just to make sure we have it straight, it's to direct staff to return in the fall with an item to raise the transient occupancy tax to, from twelve to fifteen percent, and to put that on the general election in two thousand twenty. Is that correct?
With information about what other similar cities in the local area and coastal cities charge.
Yes, is that, is that correct?
That's how I hear it.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
So we have a motion, and we have a second, and we have clarification from Trevor. Let's do a vote, and it sounds like we should probably do it individually. Thank you, Kelsey. From left to right or right to left?
Uh, Mayor Proton Fair?
Yes.
Mayor Wagner?
Yes.
Councilmember Mullen?
Yes.
Councilmember Peak?
Abstain.
Councilmember Pearson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Okay, moving on. We've done seven A, and now we're at seven B, Surf Summit Contest with, uh, Henry Stern. Seven B, this is Skylar's pitch. Skylar, do you want to take it?
Uh, yes, I want more children from the inner city to be exposed to the ocean, and I would like to see the city spend some more money on that, in conjunction with Henry Stern's office.
Copy that. Uh, I have no opposition, and I don't hear any opposition from the council. Can we get a second on the motion?
That was staff's recommendation?
It, it looks like two thousand dollars additional.
I, I think we have a speaker, Mayor?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Hey.
Okay. I didn't see a speaker slip.
Norm is making a contribution-
You're very generous, Norm.
-right now in the form of a check payable to the City of Malibu as a tax donation to support, or to the organization.
I'll let the city manager read this one.
Let's pass that to the city manager.
Thank you, Norm.
Uh, Mr. Haney, thank you so much for your donation of three thousand dollars for the Surf Summit. That's very generous, thank you.
Wow, thank you.
Very generous, Norm, very generous.
Norm, I have a question for you. Are you gonna let us take you surfing at this, your Surf Summit? Come to the mic, come on, come to the mic, I want to hear this.
Norm, on this one, we don't want to miss you on the beach this time, 'cause you've been so generous in the past.
Make sure that the guy gets a map to where the location is, too, please.
Where, where is it being held this time?
Zuma Beach.
Julia's at Zuma, mid, mid-tower, ten, ten in that area, a little farther up from-
Fourteen.
No, it's at the far west end of the Zuma Beach parking lot, up near where Malibu Makos is.
I know where it is.
Good.
Thank you.
Wow, that was incredibly generous, thank you, Norm.
Is the check good, I'm sure. Norm, thank you so much from the council, it's very generous of you.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Uh, yeah, we'll make a motion to adjourn.
Just to clarify, we had a motion from Councilmember Peak, um, to approve the sponsorship and the funding, but we didn't have a second or a vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So now they have quite a budget up there, thanks to Norm. Uh, we'll adjourn the meeting, it's nine forty-seven. Thank you very much for everybody attending, and we'll see you in two weeks.